Which council meeting is this?
Nine.
Is it nine?
Isn't it eight?
What the fuck?
I think it's eight, isn't it?
Oh, God.
Nine. Last two cause eight.
Oh. Shit.
Uh, let's thin the crowd. Andy Jones, please step forward.
Okay, do you want the speedrun version or, or, or the actual tail year?
Uh, first, why don't you, uh, tell us a little bit about your accolades?
My accolades? Hello, I'm Andy Jones, former three-time champion mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I now live in Polito and we want to build that up as a town. That's going slowly but surely.
Pause. Did you ever embezzle money as the mayor?
You know what? I didn't. I think I was one of the very few, very, very, very clean mayors.
You were.
Yeah.
I was a clean mayor.
Except for that time Julio shot a dog. That got me in some hot water.
Oh, no.
Um, I have been running events since I got here, all those years ago, and I would like to run an event now. And I am asking you, councilors, for fifty thousand dollars to supply the prize pool for it. This event is gonna consist of forty-eight contestants competing in challenges and games created by yours truly until there's only one left standing to win the grand prize. The forty-eight contestants will be randomly divided into teams of six. Two of these teams will compete on Monday, another two teams on Tuesday, and so on through Thursday. On each of these days, the teams will compete in five challenges. The team that wins the most challenges out of the five will then compete in the three V three internally, and the three winners will move on to return on Friday for five more games that are now individual-based instead of team-based. The games on Friday, we'll see the competitors slowly eliminated until we have our winner. Entry fee for this event is two thousand dollars each.
Time's off.
And all of the proceeds will be going towards the purchasing of the warehouse in Polito, which I intend to turn into what you could call a Polito event center, where I would own the space, provide all of the furniture, and not only run my own events there, but also hopefully down the line with approval from the council and business licenses and all that. Be able to rent this space out to others who are wanting to create fun and collaborative events or games for the city. My ultimate goal is to use the space to promote the most amount of events and fun for those who are unable to solo ground for a million-dollar warehouse of their own to use it.
Okay. Questions?
Answers.
Uh, do you have a, so it's your intention to, to open a, to start a business centered around doing this sort of thing?
Yes. That is my intention down the line. First and foremost, though, is getting the space because since there are so few warehouses, and that is the only one that is out of the city, I imagine that people have their eyes on it. So I don't want to make a pitch to you guys and waste your time before I have an actual space to do this out of. Because if I don't have the space, then the business is moot.
Uh, sure. Um. I, sounds good to me. Sounds good to me, man.
If we pay the money to anyone for this, it should be Andy. I, I'd go for that. Absolutely.
Thank you. I figured, uh, you know, asking for help with the prize pool is a smaller ask than asking for help with buying the building in any capacity. So instead, I'll just run events until I have raised enough money. The building is eight hundred thousand dollars. This event alone, if all goes well, which it should, because forty-eight contestants, I've had like forty-nine people try out for survival before, so it should be easy enough, especially with fifty K. I think that's enough money to get people interested in the event, but not so much to break the economy.
Uh, yep, you have, that's precisely what we would be concerned about, so. Yeah, I, I thi- I think that number is fair.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think it's like a life-changing amount of money, but it's still enough of a chunk for people to go, ooh, fifty K.
Mm-hmm.
Sick. Um. Yeah, the, like, this sort of thing, I, I feel like we don't need Fed approval for. Uh, I think it's, it's more than fair to, uh, provide that amount of money for you because you are a trusted individual who has done this sort of thing before multiple times even.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so i- if the treasurer would like to meet with you after the meeting, uh, to get all that set up, or maybe do it right now if she wants to, if she thinks everything's above board, then uh, I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, and I'm more than happy to provide logs of the transfer to the winner afterwards, if you guys want records and things like that, so.
Just text me your state ID and I'll get you the money transferred after the meeting.
Okay. Hey, thanks, guys.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, have a good one.
I'm sure I'll be back here very soon.
I'll call you later.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Same as mayor.
Uh, Cletus Cornwood, why don't you have a seat, actually, if you can squeeze in there? Walton, uh, woefully absent at present. It's a very, very draining thing being a council member, you know, so sometimes we just can't make the meetings.
Oh, okay. I mean, I don't mind standing.
True. I'm not even in here.
Okay, fuck it. All right, so Cletus Cornwood is here to talk about something near and dear to his heart, something that he has been working on presumably for months now. Uh, this isn't a guarantee that it will happen, but rather, uh, I would like to see the fruit of his labors, and I would like for it all to be known to the council at large.
It's the sheriff.
Please.
Okay. Uh, well, first things first, is what, what's the best way that I can, uh, share my document with y'all?
It's Little Texas.
Hmm.
Uh, send it to me and then I'll put it in a council document.
Okay. Give him just a second here.
Dogtown, hey, where's Bobby Charles, that piece of shit?
Ah, he worked hard last night. He's taking the day off. We subbed two, two intruders we did. It was beautiful. You would have loved him, Mayor Max.
Um. No, I heard about it.
Oh, you did?
I, I honestly, I kinda loved it, kinda didn't love it, but, you know, we, we got a, we got a new precedent set, which is, uh, you know, no cops go into Dogtown anymore forever.
Hallelujah. Hey, Cornwood. I'm gonna stand over here. I guess we just stand here and listen.
Yeah.
Everybody's got their tablets out. I think it's gonna be a long one.
All right, it's, uh, created.
Okay.
Cool.
Cool.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Why don't you read out this, uh, letter of urgency?
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, so, um, now, a lot of this stuff was written in the past, um, but, uh, but a lot of it still, a lot of it still stands, uh, basically. You know, uh, long story short, I mean, shit, I'll just go over the whole damn thing.
Yeah, just read it, bro.
Uh, well, okay. Howdy, esteemed mayor and honorable members of the city council. As a proud son of the great state of Texas and a firm believer in the law of the land in our cherished city of Los Santos, I reckon it's high time I had a word with y'all. With a heavy heart, I've come before y'all to speak out against the, uh, misguided ways of the LSPD when it comes to our sheriff's office, okay?
Wait.
Now, I know, listen up, there's been a whole heap of trouble brewing up in our neck of the woods up north, okay? There's been crime running rampant through the northern stretches, including regions around the Alamo Sea and the Polito Bay, and us, uh, law-abiding folks find ourselves caught in the crossfire, okay?
Pause, pause.
Okay.
I got a phone call the other night from a concerned little Billy. He was like, "Mayor, can you please, can you please put an end to the, the shit juice that my mommy is drinking? Cause she's blind now and she can't take care of me. Moonshine is ruining our communities."
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Well, I mean, a little bit would be okay, but the problem is it's unregulated and there's, you know, people are drinking too much of it. Regardless. Don't matter how I grew up, but what does matter is where we are now. So look, I think it's important that, you know, we go ahead and we, uh, we take our, our, ourselves, okay, who have gotten caught in the crossfire, vulnerable to the whims of these no-good outlaws who, they, you know, they ride roughshod all over us, okay? They know full well that there ain't no sheriff in sight to keep them in check. So it's time that we took matters into our own hands and brought some semblance of law and order back to our community. Okay, so my plan is to establish a satellite operation. So that's gonna be the sheriff's office right up there in Sandy Shores, you know, I call it the Little Alamo. And that is gonna be our first step toward reclaiming our safety and protecting our way of life. So we wanna bring justice to our doorstep, scare off them varments, you know, round up the wrongdoers and ensure the safety of our kinfolk. All right, mark my words, the Little Alamo ain't just a building, but it's gonna be a beacon of hope for our community. A testament to our unwavering commitment to doing right by our neighbors. It's gonna give our local lawmen the tools and the backbone that they need to stand tall and defend the good folks of the Alamo Sea area and beyond. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I ain't saying that it's gonna be easy, but there, there's gonna be some hurdles and challenges to face, but I reckon that we're up to the task. So I implore y'all, esteemed leaders, to our great city, to stand with us in our fight for justice and lawfulness and make sure the Little Alamo sees the light of day for the betterment of all of us. So in closing, I'd like to band together with grit and determination as we set on this noble mission to secure a brighter and safer future for our community. Together, we're gonna stamp out the courage of, or, excuse me, the scourge of crime and pave the way for a Los Santos that we can all be proud to call home, you know, up there in Little Texas. So with the utmost respect and the, uh, steadiest of resolves, it's, uh, from me, Cletus Cornwood, Esquire.
Okay, que- questions?
Beautiful.
Um. Bootlegging, huge problem, huge problem right now, massive freaking problem.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Can you guys do me a quick solid, uh, the cops in the room, uh, go through and try to, when's the last time you guys caught a bootlegger?
Uh, I mean, I have a pending investigation on one. It's, uh.
Sure.
But everybody hasn't had the charges pressed on.
Okay, that doesn't count. I mean, the bootlegger behind bars, caught him red-handed, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
We ain't had a bootlegging a long time in Dogtown, Mr. Mayor. I can tell you that right now.
Yeah?
Last person who got bootlegging was the fourteenth of March. Looks like it was really active before that. There's about one, two, three, four, five from between the eighth to the thirteenth, but there ain't been a bootlegging arrest since the fourteenth of March.
Are you, does the LSPD have like a, uh, county patrol unit or some shit like that?
I mean, no, not officially, no. We got, we got folks that go up there. But not, nothing official, no.
Okay. Um.
Who the hell is, uh, Eclipse?
Well, I, I don't know if you wanna hear this, uh.
Oh.
We can talk about it after, probably.
Do I know it? Okay, we'll skip that then.
It's your grandson.
Fucking weebow.
Yeah, there's these two officers that are, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it after.
All right.
One thing I will say is, uh, without the bootlegging, though, we, uh, we find a shitload of stills all over the city.
Oh, nice.
Like, I, I can personally vouch that, uh, God, we had at least a couple within the last week off the top of my head that were ten-plus stills I know that were found at locations.
Nice. Um. How much moonshine do those produce anyways? Anyone know? Like, one still? Like, how much, how much shit juice is that pumping out?
Personally, I have not run any science experiments on it.
What do y'all do with them when you find them?
Blow them up, right?
Yeah, we destroy them.
Yeah, we look at the contents, we make sure, uh, is it active, is there anything inside, uh, and make sure we remove anything, uh, and then we destroy them.
Nice.
Good.
Um, cool. Are you guys? For, for the purpose of record-keeping, can you guys start keeping track of like when you do that, by the way?
Yeah, well, yeah, there's, there's, I'm looking at the reports now. I can give you like, there's, okay, so I said there haven't been a lot of arrests recently, but it seems like that's because they've been finding a lot of stills, uh. So from the time when the last bootlegging arrest was, they found fifteen reports about stills found and destroyed.
Nice.
Nice.
So it seems the problem is getting cut off at the manufacturing level, and that's why the arrests have probably dropped.
Hmm.
Um. So, uh, we got the, uh, the honorable chief of police and the honorable assistant chief of, chief of police in the room right now. Uh, how would you guys rate your, um, the efficacy, efficacy of the, your guys' county patrol right now? I would like ten. Could it be better? Could it be worse?
Chief, you, you want me to? Uh, for, for me. Uh, for me, uh, it could be better, however, um, we release officers to go to certain areas within the city, um, depending on numbers that are on duty. So if there are enough numbers to keep the actual uh, central of Los Santos under control, then we release people to Polito, uh, over to Cypress Flats, uh, up into Sandy, wherever needs our attention.
Wait, where's Cypress Flats?
It's like Orchardville, District.
Yeah, the industrial, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're all the new construction, uh, so it's just went up just south of there.
Yeah, so the, the spots move, the hotspots move all over the city for crime.
Okay. Would you guys, uh, like, I'd like to be, uh, on-boarded as a cop, so I can kinda like watch this for a day and see how it goes. You know, like the, the, the fucking dispatch reports and.
You mean specifically moonshine or just everything?
Everything. I just wanna see what it looks like on your guys' end.
On-boarded or do you just want a, a day ride along?
Uh, on-boarded.
I was like MDT XS.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, I will say, actually, no, I don't have to say that. Yeah, I can look through those reports if I want. Uh, that, that's, that's, that's apart from what we're presenting or what is being presented right now, though. Um, do you have anything else you wanna say about the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office, Cletus Cornwood?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I could talk a lot about, um. I, I wanna talk about the bullet points, okay? That, that document is, is really an introductory document, and, uh, it ain't about all the specifics of the behind-the-scenes, but it's, it's essentially, um. Shit, I'll just go over the damn thing. How, how's that sound?
Yeah, read it out loud. Uh, we're, this is being recorded, by the way, for the, the people of Los Santos, so. They can't see what we're looking at. It's important that if there's any, any, any information that needs to be said aloud or that is on this that they can't see, then say it out loud.
Um. Okay, I mean, shitty, I'll, uh, I'll just send it. I'll go from there. So. All right, so, uh, the next thing I wanna talk about is the establishment of the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office. Um. Now, as an active member of the community here and a very staunch advocate for public safety, myself, Cletus Cornwood, Esquire, fixing to pitch here this proposal to, to advocate for the establishment of the, the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office in Sandy Shores, so there has been a, I say, I mean, hell, recent surge, but in reality, it's been, this, this shit's been going on for a while now. Uh, major, major amounts of criminal activities. We talked about the moonshine going up in the northern regions. Uh, there's also vehicle scrapping, you know, chop, chopping cars, there's, there's, uh, people robbing shit. Uh, there's illegal marijuana operations, there is all kinds of shit going on up there. And I think we should beef up the law enforcement in that area and, and really treat that area um, as a forward operating base, okay? We open up that sheriff, sheriff's office, we're gonna rope in crime, we're gonna protect citizens and ensure the safety and well-being of all the residents of Los Santos. So, these are the goals. We're gonna kick off the renovations of the Little Alamo Sheriff's Office to give law enforcement the tools to operate and process individuals. So what does this mean? This means that we need to give law enforcement the green light to park and fetch their police vehicles up there with the valet service, okay? We gotta give the law enforcement the chance to clock in, clock out of duty. That's something that's already available. Um, we gotta, you know, set up the damn, you know, microphone, all the information in interrogation room, so it all works good. Uh, we gotta give dispatch and other administrative positions there at the, uh, at the sheriff's office the ability to do their job when they're needed up there. We gotta stock up the armory, we gotta set up our, our forensics labs so that we can swap for DNA, and we can, we can run that shit, we can put it in our serial number system if we're registering weapons so that we can safely operate from both inside and outside of the sheriff's office, okay? And we gotta give the jail cells the capacity to hold more than one criminal at a time. I do think there's a little bit of uh, renovation that building. The, the building is gorgeous, don't get me wrong, but I think there's a little bit of renovation that build needs that I could, I expand on if y'all want me to, but there's some of that as well. Um. Point two. We gotta strengthen the collaboration and the coordination between the law enforcement there and the community to tackle the security concerns and to put in place some preventative measures. Presence is our first level of force, and if there ain't no presence, then people are criminals, are gonna feel like they can just do whatever the hell they want, not get in trouble. Uh, next, uh, we gotta deliver more prompt and efficient law enforcement services to folks in businesses in the northern regions, including Sandy Shores, Polito and the surrounding areas. I mean, shit's happening up there, people got houses up there. I'm, I'm damn sure, I know, Mr. Simone, you live up in Polito, you know, I, uh, yeah, and, and Siobhan, you live in, uh, you live off of, uh, Route sixty-eight in Harmony, you know? If some shit happens at y'all's houses, then y'all are gonna wanna have law enforcement capable of being able to respond quickly. Not only that, but if some shit happens, they can find a suspect, take him to the sheriff's office, even if they're part of the LSD, LSPD or the sheriff's office, it don't matter, but that building is open and operational so that we can process folks up there instead of having to go all the way down MRPD and then all the way back up, which then increases the wear and tear to our vehicles, increasing our costs. And it also reduces the amount of time that we are out there on patrol, which again reduces our presence, which again leads to more crime, uh, happening to good people in this city. It's all a snowball effect. Man, and, and it just, it all, a bunch of these little changes is gonna help to strengthen the entire community, okay? And really focus on community policing by building a positive relationship between law enforcement and the residents there, and that's gonna promote trust, cooperation, there's gonna be a mutual respect. So we need to go out there and let's roll out proactive strategies and initiatives to keep criminals on their toes. Guy, you wanna beef up that patrol, you wanna keep an eye on surveillance and have targeted enforcement operations. Let's set up a sting op. Now, like, uh, like, like Ruby said, like Assistant Chief Ruby York said, we're currently not really capable to do that all the time because there's shit happening in the city and we gotta, you know, we gotta make sure units are down there, and we gotta keep that presence in the city. However, part of the reason why that's such a strong point that we have to keep units in the city is because if we do have to respond to something up north, then it takes so long to process somebody by going back and forth and all that shit that it, uh, it reduces our presence overall, and then it, it makes it to where we can't take that risk, right? What if some shit goes down when you're up north? And we need somebody down there, or we need somebody down south. So, so being able to go up there, process a guy, send it back, uh, is, is way the hell, uh, way the hell more efficient for everybody. And hey, sure as shit, I mean, we talked about folks living up there. I mean, I think, I'm, I ain't gonna put words in y'all's mouths, but I think you'd probably be lying, Mr. Simone, if you didn't wanna have a nice diner or some, some restaurants, some, some shit up there in Polito for you to be able to go and grab a bite to eat instead of having to come all the way down to the city to go get some senior buns and some stuff at the food plaza, right?
Wait, what? Where, when, hold on.
Well, when I, no, what I'm saying is, there's gonna be.
Sandy Shore's Sheriff's Office.
Sure, but I mean, it's, it's gonna work as a forward operating base for us to be able to respond more quickly to shit up north, regardless, whether it's in Sandy Shores, Polito, Grape Seed, whatever it is. So now instead, so now it reduces the amount of time that we have to drive in order to be able to go and process somebody.
Oh, what, what, restaurant in Polito?
Well, what I'm saying is businesses are gonna happen, ain't they? I mean, there's gonna, somebody is gonna be do, having a business up in, up in Polito at some point. So it's closer to go to Sandy from Polito, or if somebody's gonna have some kind of business up in Sandy, I'm, surely, at some point, that's gonna happen, right?
Uh, I think what Cornwood was trying to say is that the increased police presence is going to, uh, build up the community so that businesses will want to open there eventually. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cornwood.
Right, yeah, exactly. Was that, was I, was that, was that? Was I, I mean, am I wrong here?
Uh. Max?
Regardless, regardless of whenever shit does or doesn't happen.
Wrong about what?
My, my point is, is that people need to feel safe, whether there's businesses up there or whether there's people living up there.
Guys, chill, 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 chill. Stop being so negative, Nancy.
Wrong about what? I was listening.
Oh, my God.
Oh, I, I, I get this. I understand everything that is required and blah, blah, blah.
I just think businesses will wanna open up there eventually because the police presence will help build up the community.
Yeah, one day, when businesses are, when our, when the.
Yeah, I was about to say, yeah, we can get to that point.
Yeah, it's one day.
Yeah, someday.
Regardless, regardless of all that shit, my point is, is if we have a place up there that we can help people to, so we can go up there, we can process folks, all that shit. This, this whole idea of, of the sheriff's office open, it ain't some damn division where we're gonna split our numbers in two or any of that. It is, let's open up the office, let's have a sheriff selection. We can go, we, we can have a sheriff go open up that office, and then they go through the process of, let's get the uniforms set up, let's go through the building, you know, make, make a few touch-ups here and there if we need to. Um, and, uh, go from there. It's, it's, it's not gonna be like a, hey, overnight, hey, half of the current PD is now part of the sheriff's office, and half the current PD is a part of the LSPD, and now y'all only patrol here, and y'all only patrol there. That's some bullshit, right? I, I think, I think, you know, excuse my language, but I, I think it's pretty clear that that would be some bullshit, and it ain't gonna work that way. But I think what would work well is if we treat that building as a forward operating base, and we are able to expand our presence up north. Right? So it starts with a sheriff, and then that sheriff would work on transfer application and all that. That's more behind-the-scenes shit. I mean, I don't know if it's, if y'all wanna hear all that now, but this ain't some thing that's gonna, uh, the, the way that I foresee this thing playing out, it ain't nothing but an opportunity for, uh, uh, for us to really expand our presence up north and to serve the people of the city better.
So, okay. I, I see what you're saying about it helping to expedite processing, um, and whatnot. Um. But does, uh, creating a new department even, I mean, is it necessary? Can't we just have the building be, you know, modified to accommodate what's necessary? I mean, aren't we still trying to, uh, bolster the, the roster?
So there, there's two parts to this. Um, I, I think, I think you make a really good point about building a new department and, you know, moving away from the LSPD, and that's not necessarily what this is. I, I, I'm a big believer in having one unified police department that is, you know, this is, this is one chain of command. You know, you, you are gonna have your sheriff and all that, but, uh, they're, they're gonna work in tandem, they're gonna work together, they're not gonna be, you know, I mean, obviously, you know.
What's the chain of command, then?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. How about that breakdown for you?
Uh, I mean, it'd be, you'd have the same, you'd have like a, like a, just like a deputy being an officer in the, uh, an officer in the LSPD would be like a deputy in the sheriff's office. You'd have the same sort of coinciding position.
How does the sheriff play in compared to the, yeah?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I think the sheriff would probably be on the same level as the, as the chief police. I mean, that, that shit, I'm not, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent.
So it's not a unified chain of command then?
Well, no, they'd work together, though. They'd work in tandem. And then eventually, I mean, this, this, this is a whole thing. I mean, I think that, that if, if I have like a, let's say a lieutenant, if I have a lieutenant that says something who's a part of the LSPD, like, hey, go do this thing, deputy so-and-so, then that deputy listens to that lieutenant in the LSPD. If there is a, uh, if there is an issue with, uh, an officer, and then they have to be striked for it, right? They have to receive a dap, a, a great word, then that is something that somebody can push forward as, as a part of the LSPD. Now, I think all disciplinary action should be talked about amongst, amongst the leadership, and they should, uh, they should approach the, uh, the punishment for that individual properly, right? But whether you're, you're LSPD command or BCSO command or LASO command or whatever the hell it's called, then I mean, you're, you're still a part of the same chain of command.
So if a deputy responds to a scene in the city.
Okay.
And an LSPD command deems it appropriate to discipline them, how does that work for the sheriff, then? Does he just sit there and go, yep, sounds good?
Can, can, can you give me a, can you expand on that? Just give me, give me like a scenario.
Uh, one of your deputies, if you're the sheriff, let's say hypothetically, goes to a scene in the city, and then your deputy, you know, let's say executes a pit maneuver, and a command member on scene from the LSPD believes that it was, uh, excessive and daps them. He, as the sheriff, disagree with that LSPD command member. How does that shake out?
I mean, I, I don't think that command member should be, uh, just putting the punishment forth right then and there. I, I don't think that's appropriate. I think, I think the, the command member should, uh, bring it up to the other leadership and say, hey, this happened? I think, I think the, the command member should, uh, bring it up to the other leadership and say, hey, this happened? How do y'all wanna approach this? And I, I do think if somebody is in the city doing some shit, I mean, it don't matter where you are, you're still a police, you're still a police officer. And whether you're a sheriff, whether you're in the sheriff's office or whether you're in the city, people still are gonna look at you the same way. They, you know, they, hey, that guy's either part of the police department or he ain't, when, whenever you're operating with folks in the city. So to me, it's, it's all, it's all one, uh. It's all one chain of command, right? So, yeah, I mean, absolutely, somebody, if somebody does some shit, you know, in the.
Cornwood, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, in all fairness, I don't think you answered that question. What, what would happen?
Well, I mean, they'd be, they'd get in trouble for it.
Yeah, but, but who? You said one chain of command, so why does the LSPD command member need to talk to the sheriff's office?
Oh no, I think they talk to, I mean, they would, they would just, they'd just take it up the chain.
From what, but from what I'm understanding, yeah, Cornwood is saying that basically the, the command member. Who deems it inappropriate and worthy of punishment would then take it to all of command who would then discuss it. And then they would, uh, dole out the, the punishment as agreed upon by all. Is that correct, Cletus?
Right.
Okay.
So what happens if you and the chief disagree?
I mean, in, in that scenario, a- again, these are, these are things that, like, I'm not, I'm not like, hey, we have to do this plan the exact way that I'm saying. But what I believe is if, if you have like a tiebreaker, the tiebreaker would probably come down to be in the department. I, I also think, I mean, this is the original plan for how I wrote this thing out. Was under the assumption that we would probably end up having like a commissioner or something overseeing everything altogether, so.
See them getting a start.
But?
But that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's why when it comes to that side of things, you know, the behind the scenes specifics of that. Then that stuff that I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent dead set on anything. I, I wanna do whatever's best for, for the PD and whatever's best for the city.
Yeah, I could also see the same thing, Mickey. If sheriff is on the same level as chief of police, would they be enacted in the same way? Would it be names put forth for the federal government to decide? Is that your thought process?
I think the sheriff, I think the sheriff should, should be in election. I mean, that's how they do in most cities, but that's y'all's decision, that's just, my, my opinion don't matter on that.
Uh, it, it should be election, it, it, it will be an election.
Uh, internally or, uh?
Uh, depends, I guess.
So, so wait, this is happening?
Uh, maybe. It depends, honestly, uh.
You said will, why are we, why are we discussing this if it's already happening?
No, what? Yeah, it will be an election when it happens.
Right, so if it's a when and not an if, then. Why, this isn't a pitch, right?
Yeah.
This is an announcement or a pitch?
Yeah, Cletus Cornwood is describing to all of you right now his vision for a sheriff's office. Operating out of the center of Los Santos or, uh, San Andreas or whatever, the fucking island, okay, that's it. Uh, eventually, a sheriff will be elected. These two things are not the same.
What you're saying, like hypothetically.
Sheriff is happening no matter if we open the office or not.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, be it of this, of, of the LASO or maybe the BCSO comes back. Or maybe the, the Maximilian thoroughbred sheriff's office opens up, you know, eventually there will be a sheriff. Because there needs to be a, a strong and concrete county presence eventually, okay? We can't just have cops operating out of the, the city when there, there is a rampant crime problem. On eighty percent of the island that isn't the city.
I mean, nobody's arguing that, it's just, we don't, we're, we're trying to understand why, uh, another department is necessary. If the LSPD hasn't even been built up yet.
Uh, counterpoint, what does it matter? How do, how does having two different departments even affect anything?
Again, it's not, it's not another.
Adding more cooks in the kitchen?
Yeah, more cooks in the kitchen is a big one.
How?
Isn't this adding kitchens?
Just like.
Yeah, it's like literally just another kitchen.
We could just open up the building.
It's all the same chain of command, so it's not adding kitchens.
Well, I mean, it's, the thing of it is franchising. You know, it's like, you know, we got McDonald's here and then McDonald's there.
Department, but only a couple of weeks ago, we were saying completely wasn't functional.
And is the federal government okaying the, uh, funding to make all of this happen? Or are we, are, are y'all planning on fundraising to have all of that implemented?
The locks were changed up there recently.
I mean, the, the building is, it, it just need, like, that place seems like running water and internet and some shit. I mean, there, there's a few things that I would like to add up there. I, I can, I, I would love to expand on that if, if y'all want me to, but as far as money goes, just the bottom line is this. If, if the, the state doesn't wanna help pay for it, I, I mean, that's, we, we, we have a lot of other budgetary issues that, that Dakota can talk about.
Look, hold, Corn, allow me, okay. Pretending, uh, pretending that opening up a sheriff's office is anything more than a cop. Wearing a different uniform with a different rank title, uh, i- is insane. Uh, they, they will continue to work together, county officers will be in, in Los Santos proper, probably assisting with necessary calls. They're gonna be using the same radio frequency, they're probably gonna be getting the same guns from the same armory, uh, so on, so forth. Uh, this too many cooks in the kitchen shit, it, it just doesn't fly.
Well, I mean, Alan was just bringing up the point as like, you know, when it comes to disciplinary actions, like who? Who gets the final say if they're, you know, if the, the two highest command can't come to an agreement? Like, who, you know, then how, how exactly, you know, are those situations like that? We're just asking questions.
Okay, um, don't know, but we will know eventually. Once again, this was just Cletus Cornwood presenting his vision for the LASO.
No, because I agree, having, having a, a station further up north would be great and it would help expedite, uh, processing. So, and then that much, I do agree.
I think when Cornwood was originally working on this too, was underneath the original iteration of the police continuity plan, which did envision a commissioner, right? Other than a chief of police, so I think that, uh, you know, obviously we need to be, it needs some adapting for the current status quo. I just wanted to share that because I know that seems confusing with the chain of command questions. But it was, it was conceived underneath the original iteration of the police continuity plan.
Right, yeah, and I mentioned that earlier, that's why I was saying like the behind, the behind, the, the behind the scenes stuff. That, that stuff, we can talk about, you know, internally as a part of the police department, how we wanna get that figured out.
Right.
But, well, we, we got two of the, the most important people on the subject in the room right now, fortunately. We got, uh, we got Ruby York, Barrett Johnson. Uh, do you believe that your operations would be impacted negatively by the, the institution of another police department?
Day to day basis, like operations, no, but from like a structural standpoint. I witnessed what happened years ago and that is my only fear is.
What, what happened years ago?
If there's not a strong enough foundation and you rip away the pillars of said foundation. The whole thing is gonna fall down and.
Who?
You start over.
Do you, who? Who are the pillars, right? And obviously you and the ass chief, right? But like, what, what, what's the, what's the scenario that you're afraid of happening? Like, who are you, who are you afraid of leaving the LSPD and joining a new department?
I mean, the reality is, a lot of people will want to go.
Why?
Because a lot of people would love to be up north, like, i- it's just, i- it is a reality.
Okay. Uh, yeah, there's a certain allure to, uh, you know, wide brim hat, you know? Good, what, what, what were the colors of the LASO? It was, uh, white and blue, right, or some shit?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we can work on all that.
Uh, nice spittoon, by the way, um, yeah.
And that was me, that was back there.
Oh, uh, yeah, I, I feel like we're kinda getting off of subjects here. Uh, the, the issue of, you know, who gets the final say in, you know, a dispute between a potential future sheriff and chief of police? And they can't decide on something, blah, 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 that's, that's something that will have to be hammered out, but it, once again, it has no bearing on what. Cornwood wanted to present to us, uh, he's a cop, he's a guy, uh, he's an old guy, old cop. Uh, this is his vision for what he could see operating and out of, in and out of Sandy Shores. Uh, and I want to thank you for presenting this to us finally.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Presentation, Cornwood.
Yeah, I mean.
Obviously put a lot of work into this.
Yeah, I mean, if you had more questions about, you know, the, the nitty gritty, just ask me, I can, I can talk about it later.
Will do, thank you, Cletus.
Thank you.
Um.
Thanks, Cornwood.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Dogtown, what up?
Hi, uh, Cornwood, I love that, I just wanna say something, um, Dogtown. Would love for the last show to be established, we could use some northern neighbors, it gets quiet up there. Anyway. I've come here today to, to forward a few names to work, uh, under me. In Dogtown, which has been running really, really good and efficiently recently. Um, with just two people, now imagine what we could do with it. Ten times that.
Did Bobby find his gun that got robbed on him up there?
Bobby's gun. Taser on your waist.
Oh, well, it's, it's, it's not real, it's, uh, I bought it from a toy. The real taser is in the prison.
Damn it, Max, I'm gonna lose my mind.
So, um, uh, does anybody have any, uh, the police, directing this at the police? Do you guys have any qualms with how I'm operating the prison? Do you wanna get this out the way? Thank you.
I already addressed everything, uh, to catch up the rest of the council. There's been a recent spate of, uh, I don't know what we're gonna call it, uh, confusion, willful ignorance. Uh, or maybe just flat out disregard for the policies that we've laid out for both the DOC and the PD to understand. Uh, I've attempted to correct those, uh, confusions, we'll call them. Uh, most recently, there was something where Cornwood and Sultan went into the airlock of the prison with full PD equipment and guns. And Bobby and Carmine relieved them of those things. Uh, due to other incidents in the past where PD went in with guns and forcibly like took back a baton or some shit, I don't remember. Uh, I've effectively volunteered to mediate any of those disputes in the future. Uh, however, they should not exist because I have told both parties, you know, what to expect and the limits they're in. Uh, so hopefully that is resolved. And Bobby, uh, and Carmine are very clear on hot pursuit and people using the prison as a safe haven to run out warrants and things of the like.
Mm-hmm, we've got a clear understanding of the legislation, I hope all other parties involved also take a, a double take on it. So they, they know what they can and can't do inside Dogtown.
Damn, the shade.
I wanna work with you guys, I wanna make that clear, I do, I really do. We gotta work together in this city to make things work, whi- which is why I want Cornwood to have his whole last so department thing. Cause I feel like, uh, as northerners, you know, we, we, we get along better. These city folk, they don't understand how we do things out in the boonies.
Yeah, it's a great way to, it's a great way to fuck things, Carmen.
Okay, uh, so the list of hopeful, hopeful candidates that I've already approved and now needs your approval. I'll start the, individual number one's name is Chris King. He is a media personality known for flossing on a stage, also plays Fortnite occasionally. I've checked, I've checked his record.
Yeah, it's pretty extensive.
Hell of a record, Jesus.
Holy.
So, uh.
Oh, criminal possession of government equipment?
What, what makes you think, what makes you, what makes you think this zoomer piece of shit is a good fit for the, uh?
Yeah, what?
Oh, uh.
For Dogtown, just tell me, tell me a little bit about him.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, he's great at cranking nineties, he has initiative and he's won a couple of world championships. You know, Dogtown has got winners, we could do some more, maybe we can teach the guys on the outside how things should be done. And I feel like he's got gusto, that's why I want Chris on the team.
Okay, um, does he have any experience?
Yeah, he's killed people.
Really? Hey, he got reckless endangerment.
Yeah.
So clearly he can care for others.
Assault with a deadly.
Kidnapping.
A lot of great things that you.
Yeah.
Uh, listen, it takes a man with a broken mind to fix a broken system. In the words of my predecessor, Bash, okay? Some of these tools I bring to you today, they're not gonna be the best. I understand, you're, you're gonna have, uh, uh, negative opinions about it, but I'm telling you, these people have worked in there with me. And I've selected them from a long list of hopeful candidates.
Did you say they've already worked in there?
Uh, yes, pro bono.
Well, yeah, we, this is just to get them hired formally. I mean, cause Carmine and Bobby can let in whoever they want, it's not like, you know?
Yeah, no, that makes sense, but, uh, why should this guy be hired on formally?
Carmen, we're not putting violent felonies on the state payroll, okay?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, uh.
Just gonna shut that part down real quick.
Well, you know what, how about this, we're gonna go home, we're gonna go home, we're gonna go to people Mr. The Mayor is familiar with. Brick the wall, you know him, he's part of your security team. Brick Shitowski, that's the man.
Does he have any violent felonies?
No.
I don't think so.
He doesn't have a record.
Yeah.
Um.
That's a miracle he doesn't have.
Wait, no.
That's cause I was his lawyer.
Oh, good shit.
Would you like for me to go through the list of why he should get a job?
Well, he's an ex-cop, so I, I.
Yeah, she's an ex-cop.
Yeah, let's be, let's, let's be clear, sorry for cutting off, Kinter.
Oh, you're right.
Our vision for Dogtown, uh, it does not hinge upon someone's ability to actually like do that job. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a containment center. For people like you, for people like Brick Shitowski, uh, for people who I just don't wanna talk to.
Say Brick Spice ever again, so.
You can call it whatever you want, Carmen, but we're not officially changing the name.
Yeah, I know.
That's sort of clear.
You know what, I get it, Mayor, Dogtown was a strain, a sore in your eye, a little piece of fluff that you wanted out the way, that was.
I, I, I love, I love Brick, I love Brick, I do.
I think that's actually a really good one, yeah.
But I plan on making it great and I feel like Brick in the equation will make it great. You know, his number one hit single, love song, I don't know if you've heard it, it's beautiful.
I have. Actually really good.
All right. Heard it many times, yes.
So yay on Brick?
I'm good.
Provided, uh, like, hon- honestly, I, uh.
But words.
Alan, what, Alan, what do you think? What do you think, Alan? Uh, I don't, uh, much mind, uh, if they were never record, I mean. Uh, look, uh, I think obviously we need to put like a limit on the amount of hiring we do and all that. Uh, but if they're, if they're clean, I mean, I don't really fucking care, you know?
Okay.
Fuck it, alright. My, my vision is right now, we, we limit it to like, maybe like six guards or some, six paid positions seems like reasonable.
I plan on doing an academy with all these people, so they're not just, I have a whole bootcamp regimen started out, me and Bobby do. Okay, so they're not all gonna survive it, so the list will thin itself out, but these are just, you know, just so you guys know, just so I know who you're okay with. Uh, next one is former security guard, uh, Gary Kabun. You might have seen him working senior buns as a security operative, no felonies, doesn't even have a record, the man's a fucking ghost.
I suppose last name?
Uh, K-E-B-U-N.
Oh, he doesn't have.
Well, this person doesn't have a profile.
To get their information for us to build.
Yeah, I got, I have it, I have his, I have his state ID.
What's his state ID?
One, two, five, nine.
And, uh, you remember how I got you and Bobby hired, I need the same thing from all your hires.
All right, understood, Supreme Justice.
I'm keeping a, a document, by the way, for the council that, uh, is like the approved guards or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
All that, thank you.
Yay or nay on him? Do you need any, uh, background, you want me to go into his traits, what he's like?
Let's, let's, let's table this guy for now.
Okay, okay.
What does that mean? I mean, yes.
Means he can come talk to us next week.
Okay, all right.
You said you only had two names also, and. Sounds like you're about to say number four.
Four? Hey, get comfortable, I heard these meetings long, uh, Scotty Bard, he likes feet.
The foot guy.
Oh, Scotty.
Oh, the foot guy.
I'll get him away, yeah, uh.
Oh, wait, why don't you shove him in the prison, that's.
Yeah, you want him in there, right, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, Scotty Triple Dark.
Yeah.
You know, since we're going through the list of people we want locked away, you know, out of our, out of our sight. You that are sure on society, I'm gonna throw it out there, Mr. K, come on, guys, let's get a yay.
I said no violent felons.
Crane literally just said no violent felons, Carmine.
So, no. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that he shot me, so there you go.
You and Bobby, uh, we made an exception for you guys, cause honestly, we felt that you guys had no chance.
we felt that you guys had no chance of operating in like normal society. So we were willing to overlook your violent felonies in order to give you this operation, cause we knew that you guys had it in you to make it something great. Uh, but, you know, we can't really justify.
Are you proud of us, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I am proud of you. I really am.
You probably thought we're gonna fail. Odds against us. Minimalist budget. Hey, Cornwood, you could never survive on our budget.
And just, just for the record, uh, Bobby, Bobby did get an expungement, so they actually don't have violent felonies.
I was looking at the same thing.
We're fucking soaring.
Carmine has none.
Carmine only has a salt battery.
Good shit.
Cool.
Neither of them are violent felons.
Marlo deserved it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can apply that standard. Yeah.
Nice, good. Okay, nice.
They hate to see me shining. Next.
I love to see you shining, dog.
Chess.
Chastanisberg Andersonas Bergensen.
Yes, that, yes, that's my boy.
Call Chester.
I really don't like the Swedes.
He's, he's American. He's American.
Can I, can I get a spelling check on that?
Fox Sweden.
Yeah, I can spell it.
His state ID is nine, five, two, five.
Just put Bergen. You just put Bergen, you can find.
Holy last name.
Chastanisberg Andersonas Bergensen. It's not that hard.
Uh, I would be for this guy. Uh, my wife and I know him personally.
Okay.
I think he is, he's a good fit for you guys.
He's a perfect fit.
Yeah, I've written him a couple of times. I can see that.
Okay, um, next, Villager the Pilliger.
Who?
Uh, Villager, the Pilliger.
I like Villager.
Background on him is, uh, hmm?
Oh, he's clean.
Yeah, two, five, two, three, so.
He doesn't talk much, but I mean, if you just need, you know, a, a guard who will stand there, I think he'd do a great job.
You haven't seen him in action. That's why you say that.
No, honestly, I think he'd be good.
I know, I know Villager.
The police force would be lucky if they had him.
Well, he doesn't speak English, so.
Yeah, I'd have, you know, me and him have sat in a room and we've talked about the financial and economic status of this world.
No.
He's very learned.
You talked to him about it and he said
You probably spoke at him a lot, yeah.
What are your thoughts on the financial, uh, structure and status of the world then, Carmine?
Communism is the solution.
Wrong.
Power to the people.
That's not what I was expecting.
Class. Death to the bourgeois will eat their bones and the royalty, the blue.
Oh, my.
Hey, that's, that's my personal opinions. I have a professional station. I'm the Baron.
I was gonna say, did you just call for death of everyone in this room?
Wow.
I mean, I'm in this room, so.
That's a good point. There you go.
Uh, next, Justin DiMarco, no felonies, regular guy, good guy, J money. Owns a couple of properties and I need someone to help me wrackle the bunch.
Are you kind of going with the Lord of the Earth, uh, people you want here, just to make sure you don't like go over the limits Crane said there? Like, uh, no top priority.
I wanna, I, uh,
We're gonna write this list and then you're gonna, you know, pick six of them from your academy or whatever.
Easy. Yeah, I mean, he's clean. Uh, I can't see his photo. I don't know who this guy is.
I don't know who that is, so, but yeah, it's no record. It
Okay, next is, uh,
Vehicles. I don't know what that, that means. There you go.
You know what? I have a video I want to show you for this next candidate. You probably have never met him. This video is all you need to know about him. It's about Dogtown, so it's relevant.
Okay.
His name is Winslow Jackson. Uh, who do I, how do I send it to all of you?
Send it to me and I'll put it in our, uh, our meeting thing.
Perfect. I'll do that. There it is. It's creative genius. You all watching it?
Yep.
Uh, where is it?
It's in the email chain. Oh.
Oh.
Aww. This bitch.
Right.
Hey, this bitch, I'm not in that.
Wow.
Welcome to hell, bitch. Also known as Dogtown. Sure hope you're excited, cause things have gotten a whole lot better around here. For us, within these gates, you are no longer a person. You all now have one name and that name is maggots. The first rule of being a maggot is that you are a maggot.
Okay.
You will refer to yourself as such.
Holy shit.
Instead of saying, I would like some free time.
Really well done. I'm impressed.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Would like some free time.
The day in life in Dogtown.
That was very illuminating and very well, uh, very well done.
Yeah.
Dakota out with it. You obviously have something with our procedures. Say it. What is it? What's your problem with how we?
Rule three, keep the latest curfew in mind. If we see one of you fuckers walking around without the sun over yours, well, you get it. We will tell you how to feel. We will tell you how to eat. We will tell you how to breathe. Say goodbye to your dignity, because this is your life now in Dogtown.
Holy fuck. Well, uh, that's Winslow for you.
Well, if Winslow's half a good a guard, is he is a video editor. He definitely has my, I'm, I'm on barter.
Yeah, fuck it.
All right, um, uh, next one is
Oh, Martin's here.
Well, he's right here. Timo.
Oh, no, that's
Corhan. He's from Finland. Is one of Max's most trusted, uh, security operatives. And I stole him from him.
Yeah, that's fine.
Turned him on him.
Yeah, we got a lot of violent felonies on this record.
Attempted murder of a government employee.
But it's character. But it's character.
No.
Max, you know him. You can attest to this.
Nope.
Three times driving while intoxicated?
Huh?
That shouldn't be illegal.
Well, he is Finnish, so.
None of these things stop him from helping us inside Dogtown.
Again.
Then he can help you.
Violent felon.
Just not be hired on. Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Max, you're not gonna say anything. He served you well.
Our standard is no
Yeah.
Carmine, I am not hiring a violent felon to the state payroll.
I'm sorry.
Now, you control the prison, you can just have him walk in and work for you. It
Hey, important, uh, we are going to be introducing a, an alternative to the expungement program today. Uh, that will probably pass, that will make it easy for someone like, uh, Timo, who probably has not committed any crimes in the last X amount of days or whatever, to get a cheaper expungement. So, uh, oh, what, what, what was it? Like thirty days, fifty thousand or some shit?
I think that's my suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you got fifty thousand dollars, Timo?
No.
Tell you what, bro, I'll help you out.
Oh, that's nice.
Oh, thank you.
But then you gotta not commit more of those. Just remember that.
I don't think I have committed any in thirty days.
Well, then there you go. It should be fun.
He is not. I just looked.
Yeah, we, uh, we, uh, I, I will say if Timo had no violent felonies, then yeah, so, uh, you know, um, we'll, we'll work on this expungement stuff today. Uh, we'll figure out where he's at and then, uh, I think it's safe to say if he gets an expungement, you could probably hire him on afterwards.
Okay, update. The list is eighty percent complete. Good news. So I got a few, a couple more names. Nobody fucking freak out.
So far, I have Brick Shitowski, Gary Cabin, Scotty Bard, Chastanisberg, Vil Adger and Justin DiMarco.
Okay.
Uh, Winslow Jackson was the other one.
Oh, yeah, Winslow Jackson.
Is that the guy who made the video?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, give that guy a raise, dog.
For real.
Oh, that's, that's not up to me, Mr. Mayor. It's not up to me.
I mean, you can, you can, you know, get a bonus, give him a bonus, you know, with the, the way that you're handling the funding so well, right, Carmen?
Well, uh, that's, uh, private affairs, Dogtown affairs.
Sure, sure. Of course, of course.
Next on the list, um, uh, I mean, he probably falls in the same bracket as, uh, Timo, but Eugene Zuckerberg.
Absolutely not.
Move on, we'll move on, we'll move on, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Gregory Johnson, former cop, who did the right thing and got pushed aside. And guess what? Dogtown takes care of good LEOs.
Uh, I thought you hated cops.
Yeah.
Me? No, I don't hate cops. I
Bobby definitely does.
Well, yeah, Bobby, I don't, I used to be a cop. I used to be the commander of the unified police force.
I'm aware.
Hey, computer forget.
I remember too, you used to lie to me in court all the time.
Oh, my God.
He actually did a really good job. I'm gonna be honest, so to be fair.
He did not do a good job on the line, just to work here.
I agree with Alan.
Well, FTOing me specifically.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, I'm for hiring him. He's not a violent felon. If, if that's someone you want to work with.
Yeah, I mean, if he, if he wants it, yeah.
Okay, um, Richard Wyotic, three, two, three, five state ID.
I do.
Cameraman. Creepy. You probably don't want him on the streets.
Oh, this guy.
Oh, yeah, this guy is creepy.
Yeah, let me, let me take him. Let me take him. Good. All right.
Please, yes. Take him, please.
I'm gonna say these, uh, they fall, they fall under the Timo bracket as well, but I'm gonna say the names regardless. Vivek Ramaswamy, the mayor we never had, and Lila Foker, his right hand supporter.
Uh, no.
That's the, the violent felony thing.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just wanted to put it out there.
Big say can get expulsion, yeah.
Accomplished to first degree murder.
Yeah.
Attempted, excuse me.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
That was a kink thing.
Big case back when.
It was literally not a
It was not a kink thing, no.
I would know.
I mind if it was, then.
I wonder where the tape came from.
No, definitely wasn't. Okay.
I wonder where that tape came from, the one they used in their courtroom. I do wonder.
They came from the police department.
Oh, it did? It did?
Yep. Sure did.
Uh, God, I love our police force. Next, uh, I want Siobhan to be vetoed out of voting on this one. Vingle, Vingle Dan. Vingle Dan.
Well, I actually, I, I support that.
He gets hired no matter what.
Yeah, he's auto hired.
He's a Dan.
Yeah, he's auto hired.
Okay, well.
You don't need our permission. You just tell me to hire him.
Okay, well, uh, that's
Like, do they matter with
Dan's, nope, nope. Dan's and Littleman are the exceptions. They're pre-approved.
Sounds good. Yep, then fuck it. I'm like
Okay, uh, that's the list. I do have other matters I want to bring up very briefly.
Sure.
Number one, I, I thought I'd approach the police force on this, but I think it's a council matter.
Okay.
Is there a way that a system can be implemented when there are DOC guards working, like me and Bobby, that, uh, criminals have the, are offered less fine for more time, so we don't have people stand up for eight minutes and are standing there with our dicks in our hands, wondering what we can get this person to do for eight minutes?
Uh, unless I'm misremembering, fines never adjusted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is not possible.
Fines can't be, yeah, fines can't be adjusted.
It is, it is outside of the police discretion.
You know what you could do? You could trick them into agreeing to stay longer.
Yeah, fuck it. You have to let them wait.
Last time that happened, I had the fucking, last time that happened, the cops were at my door ready to fucking breach my walls, thanks to Conan Clarkson.
Oh, well.
I would have killed every last one of you for the sanctity of Dogtown. I'd have, you know, we were prepared. Which rookies is a lot. Yes, you were, you were lucky Crane pulled you off. You were so lucky. All right, uh, and I only had six bullets in my gun, but I had a warrior's spirit. Uh, next thing, recently, me and Bobby realized that our pay got ducked. A lot.
Yeah, a little bit.
What's up with that?
Uh, I don't know. Just waiting to see what you guys make and if it's something great, then I'm gonna raise it back up.
Don't you think the product we've prepared, provided for you right now, but you know, Dakota, what do prison, what do, uh, criminals say when you send them up to Dogtown? Don't they, do they scream and piss their pants and say, no, please, don't send me? God, no, I'm, I'll stop doing Have I not helped in your equation?
Uh, I will say I have had people say, oh, fuck shit, I have to go back up there with Bobby and Carmine now, don't I?
I believe that. That has earned me a pay bump. I'm fixing the system.
All right, all right, all right. I'll bump it back up.
Eh, I would like the motion for equal pay to the officers, cause we do just the same, if not more work than they do.
I don't know about that.
And it's just two of us. It's
What's your pay now, Carmine?
Like a thousand dollars, they're full, fifteen hundred a full day? We got fucked recently. I thought it was inflation.
Wait, for eight hours, you're getting fifteen hundred?
No. Okay, look, if there's one rule that I know that's true about this city, it is never, ever, ever, under any circumstances, take someone's word anecdotally for how much they make. Because everyone's wrong and everyone lies and everyone's so shit.
Yeah.
Everyone's mad.
Ever.
Oh, my God.
True. I do that.
Yeah, we'll figure out how much you're making. And if it's, if it's extraordinarily low, we could probably see about a pay raise.
Um, uh, we also have a few functional issues inside Bowling Brook. The main, the main one, and I know you said that, we made it very clear, Crane, that we get no help from the council. But this is a huge, huge issue that we don't have a solution for and it's forced us into barbarism and just killing the weak. We don't have medical equipment to see the people's bleeding and broken bones. We're just leaving that to die.
Yep, yep. The local MS can help them.
Yeah, you. You have locally MS for the actual prisoners, right?
They'll drop them back up. Yeah.
And you're staunch on that? No wiggle room.
Yep. Nope.
And last thing, when, hey, hey.
My bad.
Where was I? Last, let, let, let's point, um, I understand when, uh, contraband enters prison that is under lawless rule and might make right, so if I take it, I should be able to keep it. If an officer enters my domain with their equipment, why must it be returned to them?
Um, because they shouldn't have gone in and I was correcting, uh, an error on both sides. Number one, you and Bobby baited them knowing you were gonna take their shit. So first of all, you know
Both our parts.
Shut up, Carmen. So first of all, uh, you know, you guys think you're clever, whatever. Good, good on you, okay? The cops were dumb for going in there and yes, Cletus, that was dumb of you, uh, and Aziz with their guns. That being said, they now know not to do that and you now know that I'm not gonna tolerate you baiting them into doing shit like that. So, uh, in order to keep the peace, I returned the magazines and the ammo. You will note, I did not make you give back the other shit that I know you took. So don't push, you know, what you already got, Carmine.
Look, um, let's say, I mean, now that the, the lines in the sand have been drawn, if a cop's dumb enough to go into Dogtown, uh, I
You belong to me.
We can't make you do, we can't make you give that shit back.
Incorrect, Carmen. They do not belong to you. If they wish to leave, you must let them at any time. Do you not remember that part? If they are not incarcerated on a sentence, and they enter, you cannot forcibly make them remain there.
Okay, we're not changing that.
You can't take their shit, though.
I would like to clarify something.
You can take their shit and send them out, but you cannot make them remain there.
The legislation reads inmate, and I'll be honest, I've been taking advantage of the inmate terminology, cuz a civilian and a cop who enters the Dogtown, they're not classes inmates, which makes them not.
Let me, let me play this out for you, okay? I'll make it real simple. You've got your little fiefdom, right? And you, you're exercising your Lord of the Flies, you know, you know, fucking diorama, science experiment, whatever it is, and at the end of the day, let's just use our brains here. If you begin, uh, forcibly, let's say, imprisoning people who enter your prison, who are civilians, not inmates, or police officers, and you begin, you know, doling out what you deem to be justice and all that, well, now you are no longer just a lawless zone, you are acting as an independent sovereign entity and claiming power over people who enter and all this sort of thing. You know what happened to the last people that claimed to be an independent sovereign entity, Carmine?
They won the war.
They were my enemies, death to all Sanguinians.
Right, and, and the whole Sandy Shores incident, so, let's, uh, remind ourselves that it is more prudent to work with the government that is allowing us these freedoms in our fiefdom, and not push it, okay?
The Baron agrees.
Good.
Okay, well, that is, uh, that's, that's all for me. I look forward to getting chunky paychecks and, uh, the list, uh, I guess, I'll let you know when they're ready, so just six, can we push it to eight?
Pick six to start with, the Dan's don't count towards that number.
Okay, alright, uh, okay, sounds good.
It'll make them compete better anyway.
Yeah.
And you can still hire the other two, they just don't get paid by the government.
I said last thing, this is the last thing, for real, for real, on God.
Okay.
Radios.
Shut up, Carmine. Uh, Cornwood, you had a question, was it for Carmine before you leave?
Uh, I mean, I did, I did just wanna clarify, uh, about the, the incident that happened yesterday. Uh, Carmine did tell me that he, he was, uh, he, he had full intention to return my things after he had documented.
And you believed him?
Well, I mean.
I was going to, I swear.
I, I have no, I.
Alright, goodbye Carmine, thank you.
Have a good one, Council.
Bye, Carmine.
Still not a good one.
Tape it up, you're going right.
If you need radios, you go get them at Dick Lover's.
I'll let them out.
Goodbye.
One day Dogtown, one day Dogtown will be greater than Los Santos.
I think it's already, Carmine, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take a. Let's, uh, let's take a little five minute break.
Yeah.
I, uh, I'm gonna change this top, it keeps clipping.
Sounds good. No, 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 no. I, I, I expected it to, to take a while, don't worry about it. I'm, I'm not pressed. Letting me help, uh, gather my thoughts a little bit more on some things that have already been talked about that I think are going to work in my favor, hopefully.
When are you gonna have some free time?
Let's see what happens.
Am I gonna have some free time?
Yeah, you do that. Soon, TM.
That looks very comfortable.
Thanks.
I've, I've been pretty much out sick, uh, this week, um, so, but, uh, I noticed that I also have access to certain things in my office now, so I was wanting to know if you wanted to sit down and discuss, go over and, uh, I, I don't know, talk about what, what's been happening lately? Okay. How are you doing? Good, good. Yeah, that's why I was asking about your, are you actually?
Yeah, before I was, I was very, uh, back in moments, but now I, thank god.
Good, fantastic.
Hmm.
Yeah, so if y'all leave this, I'm actually here, thank fucking god.
Oh, god, another one, I heard both.
Uh, let's see here.
Yeah, cuz. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I think people would not listen.
Yeah, the, the bot likes to bop for links, because back in the day, there used to be spam bots all the time that would just be like, join this frickin' stream, blah, 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 join my stream, watch this YouTube, yo, you've got ten viewers, come watch my stuff. I'm like, okay, no.
Yeah, and then in his pitch for chief, he outlined a command structure that was just only shift three, so everyone else, uh, could get fucked, I guess, like that, everything about that just seemed like a bad idea. I, I'm a really glad happy one, that's someone I think, uh, actually really cares about the place instead of shitty cool people, and I can definitely work with.
Yeah. Mods can just add whatever. Mods can add whatever.
Yeah, I heard that too.
No.
Being said, it is a pretty good emote.
Say that he decreased their pay. Uh, so.
Nice one.
Thanks. I aim right.
How's it going? Uh, technically alone-ish, uh, presenting, uh, PD toe to the council. A bit of a different take on PD toe, which I think.
I'm gonna take this opportunity, actually.
Hello? So.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, that works.
I have the majority of the business proposal ready, it's the, uh, administrative side of things that I am struggling on, um, on what is possible and not possible, um, and kind of the, the take on PD toe that I would like to do, um, that I think may possibly ruffle some feathers, I'm hoping not, but we'll see. Yes, and I'm flexible, I'm, you know, at the end of the day, if I put all my ideas out there and everything is shot down, besides the fact that like, yes, you get a tow truck and you get specialty PD toe things, that's fine, that's fine. I'm gonna shoot for the mood and see where I land, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please, Philippa, you wanna come?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, god, it's, it's the coalition, we're gonna get accused of, yeah, nevermind, uh.
Should we say?
Yeah, that's fine, uh, what are your thoughts on Lasso?
I have no problem with it being open, as long as it doesn't affect. I've held that, I've held that point.
Yeah.
For, forever. I think it would be good to have that be like a co, cuz I know they can fit a hospital in there, or a medical facility, I know that's.
Medical facility next to it, yeah.
I don't know how you feel about that, folks, I feel like that might be further down the road.
So, Derek wants.
Okay.
Hospitals, uh, currently, it's very rare that we have a staff for it.
Same for the PD, honestly, but.
Exactly, yeah, our whole policy is if anyone wants to work in Sandy, they have to ask for attendance and approval, um, so it's me and up, uh, and we just assess to see if we can do it, so like, if there's ten doctors on duty, we'll probably approve it.
Okay, I mean, uh, like I said, as long as it doesn't financially, uh, affect the LSPD, I have absolutely no problem with the state, uh, retrofit in that place and opening up.
But it sounds like if he just wants to call himself a sheriff, that's what it sounds like.
Honestly, I think if.
If he wins the election.
If he wins the election, he wins the election, but if.
Yeah, fuck it, I, I like that it's an election, I, I like that a lot. How do you feel about, uh, the sheriff being on the same level as Chief as that?
I mean, it's worked before, but the problem is, is that, like.
I can talk to some PD people about it, cuz I, I panned up, wasn't around for a lot of the controversy, interdepartmental controversy. Oh, you definitely, you definitely would like to hear about that, because, uh, Ruby heard about.
Baron got sixty-seven dollar.
Oh, that's, wow.
Love that.
Yeah, I love that.
This is leaving the people that I put in charge, and they're still not hearing about it.
I'm gonna be honest, it wasn't even necessarily Cornwood.
Wait, I'm gonna go put this birdie in the fridge.
The thing is, is that, like, and, and I just, I just overheard him complaining too, about the questions that we were asking, but it's like, we're asking the questions because we've seen what happens with multiple departments, you know, like, we witnessed, you know, restructures happen, you know, like, we've seen what happens when you tear down a department, uh, and open up a different one, and people start getting pulled to different departments, and like, the last restructure of the, the old, you know, republic, as Siobhan likes to call it, um, there were officers that disappeared, and I never saw again, because they got so demotivated and demoralized, that they, I've never seen them again.
You mean the UPD?
They left and never came back, yeah.
You know, I got solo cadet two days before that happened, and if I hadn't, I would've not been on duty, I wouldn't have been able to be on duty for like four months.
Yeah, like, it was.
Yeah, we don't wanna set up for that should that happen again.
And that's why, it's like, he, he's, he, it's his dream, he wants it, because he wants to be sheriff. He wants to be able to call himself a sheriff, but I mean, he li-
He literally just walked into a prison with his gun.
Real, real, real back now. Right now.
More judgment all the time, and.
A bit of a dumbass, horrible dumbass, but a bit of a dumbass.
Cornwood, don't get me wrong, I love Cornwood, and I love this idea, but, man, come on.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, the only thing I will say is, uh, if it is an election, I, which I do think is the best way to do it, cuz I thought the chief should've been an election, then.
No.
It's, it's out of our hands, right, and we're gonna.
But would it be an internal election, or would it be a popular vote?
No, I don't think anyone else out of the police department should be voting for who the sheriff is, period, end of story.
Oh, I agree, I, yeah, but, you know, I mean. But if it's a vote, we should.
Like, back home, it's a popular vote.
Be like, oh, well, Cornwood kept letting us off charges, so I'm gonna vote for him.
The only thing, the only thing I'll say is, you could.
Yeah, let's check the PP points. What we got?
To be honest, it's fair.
Okay, it said it was last updated, two hours ago.
Even if he's not always, uh.
Yeah, you're not wrong.
With decision-making, he, he does care. I don't think any of this is a power grab, I actually think he.
And the thing is, if, if you're gonna propose something so substantial, and, um, what's the word that I'm looking for, uh, will have a huge impact on things?
Oh.
You're gonna need.
This is one hour, holy.
Tough questions, like, it's literally our job to sit here and think.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, yeah, I think everyone's running.
Alright.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with all that, but.
Yeah, honestly.
Yeah.
It's just like, one of those things, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Wow. Angry little, little duck.
Uh, everyone here?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I am so sorry, Cornwood, I am an asshole.
Yeah.
Oh, god!
That is entirely my fault. No, no, I don't deserve that.
I am so sorry.
No, no, that is, no, do not worry.
I apologize.
I deserved that.
Uh, on, on that note, would it be okay if Ms. Petros gave her, uh, her pitch to us, since she's clearly fired up?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What a great start. Hi, Council, how you guys doing today?
Hi.
Hello, Ashira.
Hello, I'm Ashira Petros, for those of you who do not know me, um, I'm here today to talk to you guys about, uh, PD toe, uh, but a bit of a different take on PD toe than what it used to be. Um, obviously, uh, it's still, I mean, going to be a pretty traditional PD toe, in the sense that we're there to, you know, tow vehicles for PD, um, but something that I'm looking to do, um, that I'm willing to also discuss with council, if it's possible or not, is whether or not PD toe, when they're not actively towing, if they would have the ability to also do basic, and I wanna emphasize, basic repairs for PD vehicles. It would be a specialty mechanic kind of position, it would not be allowed to do turbos or engine swaps, it would only be repairs. As far as kind of, uh, like a bunny's request, all they would be able to do is handle liveries and life bars, and other discretion of the chief of police and assistant chief of police, based off of what they are choosing as, you know, the standard for police vehicles. Um, ultimately, I'm kind of looking to hopefully work this either, um, outside of the motor pool of PD, or, or, uh, very close by. Now, the problem with this, and why it's also being presented here, is that currently in the, um, charges that we have, is that, um, PD toe is considered a government official, um, and it's why I'm looking if this does get approved by you guys, is, uh, transferring it to more of a law enforcement technician role, and seeing whether or not that would still be considered a, uh, quote-unquote, government official.
Hmm, why is she pitching this?
Well, the reason for PD toe being put under the government employee, uh, category, was that, uh, there were people who would routinely, uh, kidnap, harass, shoot, stab, otherwise, you know, uh, attack, uh, PD toe workers. And as such, in order to deter that behavior, or make it at least more undesirable, uh, they were labeled government workers, so it would be attempted murder of a government employee to do so. Uh, that being said, I, I don't know if that behavior will resume or not, so I would say that probably depends on whether that behavior emerges.
Uh, based on how the, uh, receptionists and dispatcher treated when they're in the front desk, I would assume yes.
Hmm. I would also argue that I have already, uh, while actively towing a vehicle for PD, while being escorted by PD, have been yelled at by vehicles passing by that wanted to, uh, get the vehicles off the bed of the truck.
Oh, yeah, that literally happened like two days ago, I think.
I believe it's, it is inevitable, as far as it happening right now to that extent, I haven't seen it personally, but I do think it is just a matter of time.
Well, the reason, the reason why PD toe was created in the past, was because, uh, toe workers would get called to a job for PD, and then would either obstruct or assist, uh, the criminals involved. Has that been happening? Is that a concern?
As far as I'm aware, I have not seen that. Um, I know a struggle that myself and a few other toe workers have, uh, come across, is that the impound requests that get sent through, uh, Mr. Tom Towingson is not always consistent, and at times, local tow will just snatch the vehicles as well, um, and then there is the. Um, and then there is the issue of there are some impound requests that officers can do that normal tow cannot take to an impound lot and just impound themselves, so they do need an escort. And as far as what I have gotten feedback from, from several officers, at least during shift two, is there's not that many reliable, I won't say reliable, that's not the right word, there's not a lot of people that they trust to be able to handle the job properly. Um, nor do in my experience have seen any, or, or too many of the current quote unquote tow employees that understand the need to expedite scenes when it comes to PD requests. I've seen a lot of people in tow that just kind of dilly-dally and don't understand that the, the whole point of what I'm trying to build is to expedite the process for PD um, through reliable services and just general professionalism, um, to be able to get them back to doing what they're supposed to do instead of just sitting here waiting for tow to do their job.
I love PD tow, uh, when we used to have it and I always had the utmost respect for PD tow workers, you are.
Well, uh, sorry, I gotta ask one question, would you be pursuing an expungement, ma'am?
Yes, um, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Siobhan about ten days ago, um, about all this as well. Um, I am well aware that I need an expungement, I'm well over forty days past my incident, I have not gotten a single even traffic ticket since. And I've been actively saving up for an expungement, unfortunately, I don't, uh, I'm not like the rest of the people in the city and I like to actually interact with human beings, so it's a little bit harder for me to earn some, some money. But I am actively working towards it, yes, sir.
Awesome.
Trust me, if I could have taken care of it yesterday, I would do it. Um, I believe I'm at seventy thousand, I believe. Yes, seventy thousand.
Oh.
Almost there.
Almost.
February third, I could tell you that.
Oh, okay, you have it, you've gotta memorize.
I, I, well, I looked up my last incident, I got the FOIA report forward to look at it, which I believe was the felony charge, and I have not even been pulled over since.
So currently tow get paid by the job when they get called.
Correct.
If you guys were not uh, getting a job through it being marked and were otherwise simply just being called by PD or assigned a job.
The question needed to be asked.
The way you got paid was you had either a salary or there was a PD budget and then which, uh, PD would pay the PD tow workers out of that budget, same with receptions. So how, how would that work now?
I think given the current state of PD's budget and or lack thereof, no offense to PD currently, um. I think the simpler way of doing it, we either to, to keep the same system that's currently in place with towing where you do get paid per job. Um, I think that's the easiest way of doing it. Otherwise, I, in a perfect world, I would love to see almost a like hourly pay slip kind of system, um, that way when you're unfortunately having to twirl your thumbs, because let's be honest, PD isn't impounding cars left, right and center all day, every day. Um, you're still able to make some money here and there. That's a perfect world and I'm, I'm very much open to suggestions on what would work for the city as well, um, that's just my preliminary thoughts on it.
So if, if PD see, you would get paid based on PD impounding the car with your escort, or how would that work?
If it could work the way that towing currently is, where those who are clocked in for PD tow would get the impound request that PD marked for cars that need to be, um, escorted. I think that would be the easiest way around it.
Random aside, um, if our new amendments to the expungement process pass, have you had an expungement before?
I have not, this would be my first.
Uh, you would qualify for the fifty thousand dollar clean for more than thirty days first time expungement.
Which would be fantastic and I definitely hope you guys pass that.
Sounded like we were in.
R and P Hazel.
Agreement the last time we met, so it seems likely, but.
Oh, Hazel gonna be mad.
Yeah.
My hurdle is just gonna be getting a lawyer and a judge together in the same room.
Chemicals happen.
I can wish, right?
If you get a lawyer, uh, I'm sure that can be arranged.
Yep.
Like, I can make it happen, I feel pretty confident.
Well, um, I mean.
In right now.
If, if the PD tow thing can, can happen, I mean, I'm all for it because it definitely helps PD to expedite uh, scenes for sure, so, and having reliable people that they can count on is good, it's just, um, as long as they're all, uh, understanding that, I mean, PD tow got targeted a lot back in the day.
Mm-hmm.
They got kidnapped, they got beat, they got shot, they held up constantly.
There's a lot on it that I've already thought through on that front, um, I think it's, it's a risk you have to be willing to take, um, there's several steps as far as like the hiring process, um, that I am pretty adamant about, for example. Um, anybody who is a PD hopeful, that way somebody, in the sense that somebody has put in an application for PD, um, I won't hire them. Because I wanna hire people that are here to do towing and people that are, you know, here to do the job and that aren't going to leave me high and dry once they get hired. Now, that being said, I am open to hiring actively employed PD if they wanna have a second job, take some time off duty and still earn some money, I'm fine with that, but PD hopefuls will not be hired, I'm, I'm firm stance on that one.
That's fair. That way you can have a consistent, instead of constantly training new people.
Exactly, that's whatever they did get hired or whatever, I'm, I'm a big fan of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm, the way that I've been trying to figure this out is how can this work with minimal needs outside of how the city is currently structured and the towing system that we have, it works well. Like, I, I don't think anybody who does towing can sit there and say that there's anything like drastically wrong with it, I think the only thing that I could see is, I don't know if maybe Tom has a cousin that specifically specializes in police impounds. That would be the only thing, I don't wanna see PD tow doing, um, toes for Tom, that is for that side of, you know, towing, i- this is a very like separate division of it, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, though, I would love for PD tow to have the ability to impound illegally parked vehicles and be able to send that to your regular tow workers to be able to you know, push some more work their way as well.
You mentioned the part about actually repairing vehicles, so you, you want to hire on mechanics to do this as well?
Yes.
Would that be a requirement for the job, just like some could do it, or how do you think for that?
Honestly, that's up for discussion with the council and what they think would be appropriate with that, I think it would be a, a great way of being able to give people just a little bit of extra work. Um, especially if they're waiting for, for impounds or just driving around, it wouldn't on us, also being able to just assist PD and as a whole. Um, again, I wanna stress, these are just basic repairs, it's not gonna be engine replacements, it's not gonna be turbos, it's not gonna be anything like that, it is just basic repairs. Um, just for the ease of, you know, sometimes, there are no mechanics around, um, but there's always tow around. I've, I've never seen a time where I haven't seen a tow worker in, in the yellow pages, so if they were to work for PD tow, they would be able to kind of fluctuate and do both things at, you know, their leisure. Um, but as far as if they were able to do, let's say, Benny's work as well, again, very minimal. It would be liveries and light bars, um, as per whatever the, you know, standard is that's set under PD High Command. So if they wanted to get like big wheel changes or axle chains or whatever, like they would have to go to a full mechanic shop.
PD tow's self-explanatory.
Abilities here.
I'm not much better with the PD needs, so I might defer to Nicole on that, but it sounds like a good idea on that front.
Yeah, I've been briefed on all this and I'm very much in support of it.
Okay.
The way I look at it, it's, it's, I know it's a bit of a tall ass to be able to do both, I'm well aware of this. The way I look at it is, it's efficiency sake, it's being able to have, for all intents and purposes, a one-stop shop, that way we're able to get officers back on the road a lot quicker, uh, a lot more consistently and just letting them be able to do things that their job requires without having to sit there and go crap, I need to fix my vehicle and there's no tow workers and, or there's no repairmen or whatever, and now I'm in a chase and I can't go do my job, like it's, being able to assist in that so that the efficiency is there and that they're able to do what they need to do quicker, that's the goal.
Uh, if you have any questions in regard to the police side, we, we are here if you need to ask us anything.
I guess for y'all as well, uh, does this seem like something that'd be interesting?
Uh, I think a lot of us have already spoken to a share, this is, um, uh, something that would grow. Uh, currently, uh, officers pay cash out of our own pockets, uh, if it is a vehicle that needs to be towed. Uh, yes, there are times where no one is available in the lemon list for towing. Um, again, we do pay for it ourselves, we don't have a budget to take money out of to pay for towing. Um, and, uh, if our force increases, then yes, I can definitely see a need for PD tow.
I don't know much about how it all work, but I like the idea, that's my take.
Random, uh, aside, what do you guys, uh, I know I talked to Barrick about this briefly. Uh, what if that fifteen percent commission on fines just goes straight to the PD budget, what, how do you feel about that, uh, Ruby?
Uh, I think it should have been like that from the beginning. For example, we had a situation today where we had over ten officers respond. We were able to catch three out of four suspects, so that means only three individuals who processed those three individuals get a fifteen percent kickback. Most of the time, if you're an FTO and you wanna help your cadet, your cadet will do the processing. So they get the fifteen percent and we ended up getting nothing, so the more senior officers who are giving the work to the lower ones are getting the fifteen percent. And absolutely nothing goes into any kind of PD budget, so I agree, it should go into a pool.
Okay, uh, I'll make that suggestion to the federal government.
Quick question?
What up?
Uh, number one, that is capped, is it possible to get that not capped?
No.
No.
Okay, that's fine, I just, I wanted to ask the question, then in that case, could we get it up to twenty percent?
Uh. Uh, I'll ask, I'll ask.
Okay. Uh, PD tow thoughts, everyone, please.
I talked to Oshira about this before, as she said, I'm a big fan in general.
Sounds good to me as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it, yeah.
Mm-hmm, I'm also for it.
So you're proposing a business?
Technically, yes, um, the, the biggest struggle, um, which, um, Crane did kind of address was whether or not this was considered a hybrid government position or not, cause I know that kind of differentiates how this is taken care of.
Um, what if the police department just hired you and you, uh, just worked like directly with them like that?
I'd have to defer to PD on that one if they would be okay with that.
Just, uh, I mean, you would ha- you would have access to documents that might potentially be not for your eyes. Uh, if you were given the same permissions that like a regular officer would have, and I don't think there's really a way to differentiate between, hey, uh, you know, I'm just a, a worker and not like a cop.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can create some.
I can do that on the MDT right now. Cool, uh, would, would they, wo- would she be receiving the same pay? No, so pay is tied to, uh, me hiring or Barrick hiring them via their state ID. Access is handled by MDT. Okay, so you, you could just. There are, there are, however, there are base levels of access ascribed to certain positions. Uh, so we would need to ensure that we were able to restrict past the base level of the position. Okay, so, I mean, chief, ash chief, uh, Oshira, would you be amenable to kind of like, that is a starting point for you to be able to operate PD tow?
Yeah, that's fine.
Cool.
I don't have a problem with that, my only concern is being able to physically pull out tow trucks, that may have to be something that you do off duty and then bring it to wherever, if that makes, I, I don't, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I mean, there's that and the whole money kind of thing that Ruby mentioned as well.
Mm-hmm.
What money thing?
Ped. Like how they, i- if they get, well, I guess they would get paid naturally.
Yeah. Uh, it sounds like Oshira's concerned that she wouldn't be able to actually tow stuff.
Correct, or be able to actually impound things, I, I'm all for the idea, that's how we could at least get this started while other things are being worked on, I'm totally fine with that, I'm open to it, I just wanna make sure that we're clear that there will be limitations.
Well, cops, cops can, uh, can impound, it's just, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, I guess. I don't really fully understand how the process works, like, I feel like they flag it and then you come pick it up and then you bring it to the impound lot.
Yeah, depending on the charge that it's getting, uh, it's getting put on it, yeah.
Do you get paid for delivering the car?
Yes, if, if it is sent through, uh, ew, that's a very hard question to answer because Tom is a little picky on how quickly you get to where you're supposed to go. Um, and I've seen, I, I have no validity here, it's just a, a common thing I've noticed.
Suffice to say, there are questions that Max and I need to pose, uh, to the state regarding the particulars of all this. I think we have a good idea of the, the request, uh, the implementation is something we'll need to figure out. It sounds like, um, if you were technically hired on as a cop, um, you would have the ability to issue those impounds, uh, and there are certain, uh, basically, you could do this whole thing just without getting paid at the end of delivering the car, but you would be getting paid anyway because you're gonna be on salary.
Which honestly, I feel like that is perfectly fine.
Okay.
I, I think that that would, that would, that would be fine with me, to be honest with you.
So why, as a starting point, why don't we do that, right? Uh, you get hired on by Barrick and Ruby. Um, you, uh, have your permissions restricted by Alan, so you can't see police reports and stuff that's confidential. Um, and then, uh, you know, so, oh, first you're gonna have to get expunged, obviously.
Yeah, first we probably gotta get that.
I'll contact a lawyer, see if I'm done here.
Uh, and we can use that as a starting point and any concerns about like just being able to operate that you have, uh, you can bring up to me or Alan and then we can forward it from there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let, let's try this for a week and see how you're able to operate and how you're able to do stuff and just see how, uh, you know, what you're actually like desperately needing and then we can forward some stuff forward to the, uh, federal government.
Yeah, I, I love that a lot, actually.
Cool, uh, thank you for presenting your stuff, Oshira.
Of course, I appreciate it, I will go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Uh, no. Not yet, it's not voted in yet, so you will not, you gotta wait till we talk.
I will wait till you talk, door should be open still.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you to unlock the door.
Did I let Cornwood out, you know?
Cool, that went well.
Yeah.
Yeah, she did a great job.
Uh, is High Command here for a reason? Do you guys have something you wanna talk about? You're just kind of observing.
The pay situation, ultimately.
Oh. Oh. Uh, what pay situation? Oh, I lowered their pay by ten percent.
Oh. Okay, but you raised the fines by like five percent, I know it didn't come tax, right?
Yeah, yeah, I lowered, uh, the fines back down to default.
Okay.
That's why they all have weird numbers. Well, they don't have it anymore, cause I lo- I lowered it, like literally when we took a little break.
Can you clarify, the fines on the, the charges were lowered?
Failure signals back to sixty instead of sixty-three dollars.
Say that again, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, 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 so the, the fines, like, uh, last night, failure to signal was sixty-three dollars, now it's back to sixty, so it had a five percent difference.
So.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Allow me to elaborate, um, I don't think you guys are doing a very good job at, uh, actually catching and processing criminals, I think that there is rampant crime in certain aspects and parts of the island, uh, and in order to kind of crack down on that, we are going to operate on a quota system, now you might be familiar with how uh, certain police departments and jurisdictions, uh, typically are met with a quota in order to receive funding, blah, blah, blah. Uh, this quota system is simple and I'm going to forward it to Barrick and Ruby here so that they can, uh, make a little announcement, uh, I did speak with Barrick about this briefly last night, uh, when it, when the idea was kind of in its infancy. Um, essentially, if you get fifty quota points, you get a pay raise for the whole department. Uh, in certain crimes that I believe in. Uh, and certain crimes that I believe in, from what I have heard from other people that are currently kind of running wild, uh, are being targeted by this quota system. Uh, and I will just read off some examples, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, traffic citations, obviously, we don't need people speeding through the city and stuff. I know that's kind of like the LSPD's forte currently. Uh, is going to be worth zero point one quota points. Um, joyriding, a big stolen car problem, uh, it's gonna be zero point five quota points. Bootlegging, one quota point, money laundering, three point zero quota points. Uh, criminal possession of a firearm, four point zero quota points. Sanitation robbery, huge fucking problem right now. Uh, five quota points, adoption fraud, ten quota points. Um, I don't really expect you guys to get that one. Um, and I set a little goal for this week, starting today, of fifty quota points. If you're able to rack up that many points, you guys get a pay raise. And now you might be thinking, Mayor, what if we kept someone doing adoption fraud while robbing sanitation? And they had a firearm that they weren't supposed to have, but also they were money laundering, blah, blah, blah. Um, basically, the highest point worth, uh, charge is what takes precedent. You can only get credit for one of these on an incident, right? So, uh, if they've, if, if a sanitation robbery is happening and the guy had a, a gun that he wasn't supposed to have, obviously, he would technically qualify for nine quota points, but wait, you only get credit for one, uh, the root issue, which is the sanitation robbery. So it would be the highest one, five quota points, simple. This is to decentivize, uh, charge stacking or people trying to, to fish for, um, you know, trying to reach the quota point ASAP, uh, you know, instead of, the, the purpose of this system is to spread out and to target certain crimes that I have observed to be a huge problem. Uh, instead of just kind of sitting in the city and issuing speeding tickets. Uh, hopefully, that allows some insight into my thought process. I, uh, this is why I wanted to be on boarded as well. So that I could go through and I could, you know, tally up all your guys' points and stuff. Uh, this counts for all shifts. Uh, I think, I think fifty points with this current system is more than achievable. Um, in fact.
Time period?
Yeah, a week, one week.
So at the end of the week, you're gonna go through every single report and add this all up yourself?
Yeah. Yeah.
So will we be putting a halt to, uh, recruitment?
No, what?
Well, it's just, I, I don't, uh, are there quota points for onboarding and for training and for academy? Are there any points for that?
Uh, no.
Will you be adding points for police work other than, uh, citations and tickets and arrests?
Uh, the, the issue with awarding points for that is, um, retention, right? Not, it, it's hard to say, you know, sure, you, you hire someone, you send them through academy and stuff. Uh, but you know, how can I be sure that that person's gonna be, uh, actively and diligently working a month from now, right? Uh, the, the purpose of this quota system is to target specific crimes. Uh, I, I will say, I, I'm very appreciative and I think it's an extremely valuable job to actually take hours out of your day to run those academies and to, and to teach new cops how to be cops. Uh, and I would be interested in discussing some form of, uh, bonus for people who do that monetary bonus, but uh, there are a lot of cops. Um, at least for, I, I, for example, I think shift two could probably take care of this quota by themselves. Um, but yeah.
So what is the monetary gain? Should we hit this?
Uh, I'll raise it by five percent.
What was it lowered by?
Ten percent. Uh, but, uh, conversely, if, uh, if you guys are unable to meet this very, I think it's a very reasonable quota. Uh, I will unfortunately probably have to lower your pay.
Well, we already have people that are not willing to come on duty, so it'll just continue.
You've already made things worse, if I'm being entirely honest. So.
What, what made worse?
In terms of just unit numbers on duty, since you made the change to the pay, things are already worse.
The, the difference is a matter of, I don't know, six hundred, seven hundred dollars a day?
Well, yeah, because people would rather work other jobs in the city where they can actually make money instead of the job that we selected them and hired them to do, which everybody else is gonna make more money than them and they have to do twice, three times, ten times the work. And it's just, I don't know.
If, if the incentive or calculus for being a police officer is, uh, income, then we have all failed.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, look, and I know.
I don't think you're listening to us.
I am, but he just, he just got done saying that lowering pay caused people to go off duty because they'd rather go make more money elsewhere. And my contention is, my contention is that if that's the case, I don't think a ten percent amount changes that factor. That equation is not superseded by ten percent, is it? You're telling me that ten percent is the difference between staying a cop and going and working another job? I feel like it's the opposite. I feel like cops already make less than working other jobs. So the ten percent is just a, a symbolic emotional response to something and is not rooted in math. It's, it's not, it's not a logical choice where they're actually sitting down and budgeting out their income. It's a, it's an emotional one. Unless my math is off, but I'd be happy to hear how.
Uh, who are, who are the cops that are not coming on duty because of this, out of curiosity?
So it's not a, a matter that they're not coming on duty, it's just they are giving us less hours. So they're still cops, they're still doing, you know, when they do come on duty, they're doing their work. However, due to, um, whether it be, uh, you know, several officers, you know, in a house, trying to get a house together or or they already have, you know, it's just basic cost of living. A lot of officers are doing extra jobs because they wanna purchase their own PD vehicle, you know, so they've got goals. It's not that they are not coming on duty a hundred percent, it's just that we have noticed that they're clocking off duty earlier or they're coming on duty later because they're doing other jobs so that they can pay towards.
They haven't even hit a piece of legislation yet.
Do. A lot of us, I gotta tell you, the repairs unfortunately went up this week, so, you know, almost all my paycheck goes towards a repair.
How much, how much is that one across right now?
Uh, the highest at the moment that I've paid is about eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred to two thousand is, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in between them.
I, I paid fifteen hundred the other day, so it must have gone up recently.
It, it fluctuates depending on parts and availability.
And certain mechanics can offer that lower price point, but not all of them can.
Right, yeah.
And depends if they're on duty and all that good stuff, you know?
If they have parts, yeah.
So here's what we'll do, okay? Um, I want you to forward me the names of these people who are kind of, uh, hung up on all this stuff and if I, I will speak to them personally if it seems like they're not a good fit for the, uh, LSPD because they're more focused on, uh, you know, uh, a seventy dollar, what was, it was like forty-three dollars an hour difference, I think.
I, I don't think, I don't think you're quite fully understanding what I'm saying. They can make, uh, what I would make in four hours in a, you know, in, in an hour, hour and a half shift doing towing. That, that's the difference.
Yeah, but we're, but we're, but hold on, we're literally right back to what I just said. You're, you're just, I'm still stuck on this.
Okay, they haven't lost passion for the LSPD. They're still coming on duty. They're just not giving us as many hours.
So, and, and but so you're trying to explain why they're not giving as many hours because it's more enticing to make, you know, four times as you just said, right? But the ten percent change that he made doesn't change that calculus. It remained before the ten percent change. So again, this is just an emotional response. It's not a logical one. I, I have yet to see any evidence that this is a logical measure of response about budget and finance. It sounds like their pay got docked a little bit and they took it as like a symbolic thing. Well, well, that's the last straw. I'm just gonna go tow. I mean, they could have done that beforehand.
Ten percent is a lot, sir.
Is it enough to change the calculus or no?
I mean, the fact that none of us were told it was gonna happen, it was just a surprise, you know?
That's, that's not an answer to what I asked.
So your question again?
I've asked it three times. Have you not been listening to anything I said?
Uh, I have been listening.
Okay, my question is as follows. You said that someone can go make four times as much doing tow as being a police officer. Your complaint is that this is an example, this precipitous transition towards them doing that is because of this pay cut. And you're talking about numbers, but what I'm arguing is, is that they would have done that beforehand, the pay cut, and it would have been worth just as much more. Ten percent does not make it suddenly four times stronger. So if it's been the same before or after the pay cut in terms of that calculus, then what we're saying is these people took the stimulus of the pay dock and it became an emotional response. I have yet to hear any evidence or argument that makes sense that this is an actual financial issue. It sounds like it's just an excuse to flip over the game board and walk outside and take your toys and go home.
Random interjection, also, uh, I lowered income tax from ten percent to five percent, so the difference here is actually realistically more about five percent.
So can I, can I answer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just, I wasn't sure if it's allowed to. I, I don't believe it's an emotional response. Uh, I believe it is the fact that we are seen as officers of the law, working for the city and that a lot of people feel that, uh, due to the high tax rate before and now the lowered tax rate, which we are all appreciative of. The fact is, our pay has fluctuated and with the amount of cost that we have to pour into the vehicles and a lot of us are trying to save so we can purchase our own vehicles and become responsible for our own PD vehicles. I don't believe it's an emotional response. I think it is a need and some people are seeing it as a need.
I mean, it was a need before and they just feel even more slighted by this.
Oh, well, I, I, it wasn't my intention to slight you guys. It was just kind of, uh, you know, uh, if you guys work, if, if you work hard enough, that ninety percent could go up to one hundred and twenty-five percent. Can you imagine that? That would be great. All you gotta do is meet the quota.
I'm gonna see the math, by the way. It is five hundred dollars left for an eight-hour shift. That's what the math equates to. That's it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like it's a giant chunk of money.
To be fair, for some people, that's enough to afford their repair.
Sorry.
Pete, that you're sorry.
To be fair to some people, that is the money they need to afford their repair on the vehicle for the shift they just worked.
Uh, fuck, man. Get out there on a bike then, I guess, if you can't afford it.
People are doing that.
Yeah, I know, and it pisses me off.
Shouldn't?
So you just said people get out on a bike and that annoys you though, right? You see the dichotomy between those two things?
Of, of course, I, I look, of course I see the dichotomy, okay? Uh, that said, I have no good reason to dismantle your bike unit. So go ride a bike if you can't afford five hundred bucks.
I suppose I just see an imbalance between wanting us to work harder and will prove ourselves, which I believe that we already have, at the same time as building the LSPD. We're not gonna be giving any kind of quota to anybody that is pouring their time into raising up the cadets that we currently have or the academy that we are trying to schedule right now. So all of our time to get to your quota is going to be spent doing other things at the moment.
Already wrote that down.
Wait, hold on, are the, hmm, that's interesting.
I'm just saying, we've got a balancing game here and, and you're either gonna help us balance or, or there's not gonna be a balance.
So you don't, you don't think the, uh, the active patrol contingent are capable of hitting the quota without the administrative side also participating?
I, I think that it would be fair to say that the quota should span over all duties of officers.
Um.
I mean, you could take into account FTO hours. There's multiple things you could take into account. If you're basing it just on arrests, um, I personally would have to talk to, uh, Barrick and, and others in leadership about maybe putting a halt right now so that we can test how many quota points a week we get.
Uh, yeah, you guys aren't gonna freeze, uh, hiring. That's not happening.
And will you be expanding the quota points to other duties of an officer?
Look, I'm gonna be honest, fifty, fifty of these points in a week could be achieved by five cops. Straight up, they got a whole week, eight, eight, assuming that they work eight hours a day for seven days. There, you would have to be extremely, extremely bad at your job to not be able to do that. Uh, and I know that you guys have at least five cops who are able to do this job, uh, who are not operating on the administrative side. Uh, and I set it low because this is kind of like the intro, right?
I mean, realistically, it's not bad. It's very manageable.
Okay, but you just said you want officers to work eight hours a day for seven days?
Yeah, like a job.
So eight hours a day for seven days, like a job?
Well, yeah, they could take one day off, maybe have one of the other cops fill in for them, like a schedule.
Very generous, man.
Is every single one of the charges attached to one of these points?
Uh, what do you mean? Like every charge? No, the, the purpose of this is to target certain crimes.
Right, so the, so what I would say is then that is going to lead to people only targeting those crimes and letting other ones go by the wayside, thus negatively affecting the public and the civilians.
Um, good. I'm not, not the negatively affecting the civilians part. Uh, I want them to focus on these crimes. That's why I came up with this.
I'm just gonna say sanitation robberies have been brought up to me, uh, by countless citizens throughout the last week as being like a real issue. Um, and you know, when it comes to your repair costs, right? Those workers getting robbed has downstream effects on the supply chain.
He said eight hours a week.
Uh, that are extremely negative for officers. So I think focusing something like sanitation robberies is actually gonna help you, like the mayor is trying to help.
Wait, is sanitation robbery?
Eight hours even in a week. You didn't say eight hours a day.
No, but if you catch someone robbing a sanitation worker, plus five quota points.
Okay, but, um, how many, I, I mean, for the last week, uh, as you can see, we have dismantled, uh, I would say in excess of about twenty-five, maybe even more, um, moonshine distilleries. So as we're curbing one crime, you guys are holding up a placard saying, oh no, don't worry about the moonshine distilleries that you guys just got rid of. We need this done over here.
He did say eight hours a day. Either way, these are.
What I'm trying to say is that.
Playing for eight hours a day, so.
In my experience, crime rolls, there are highs and lows in every crime. When I was first hired, oh my goodness, marijuana everywhere. And so what did we do? We hunted out all the marijuana and then things changed. It went on to group six being robbed. Then it went on to sanitation being robbed and we moved as a PD to every single one of them. So I think it's extremely unfair to say, well, last week sanitation were robbed. Well, yeah, they probably were, but we've just got rid of all of these moonshine distilleries. We, you know, we're, we're rolling as hard as we can when the crime comes up.
Well, you said at least five cops could do it then.
Uh, I, I would have added, uh, still destruction into the quota system. Two point five quota points.
Manage this for the entire police department, is what are you saying? He's.
Nice, you guys could make up like half it right there.
Yeah.
We retroactively initiate this back to like three days ago. It's like, we'll hit it right now.
No, no, okay, so this will be for one incident. So if you find a bunch of stills together, uh, you know, that's only two point five points.
That fucking sucks.
Sounds like we're gonna be late in a lot, a lot of individual reports.
Had twenty points two days ago.
Well, I can't wait to review those individual reports and then find out you guys are trying to game my system and dock your pay again.
How, how many, how many points we need a, a week or a day?
Fifty? Fifty for a week.
Between the entire PD, not individually.
I mean, let's be honest, uh, seven times seven is forty-nine. If you need fifty in a week, that means you only have to get seven points a day. Some of those things are worth four points, which would only mean you would need like one or two other things. This is easy as fuck.
Should we get like a big clock that we can put over the PD, like Hunger Games? That way we'll know when the timer starts and when it ends.
They find that gun, criminal possession, easy four points, yeah.
This, uh, this meeting ends, whatever that time is.
Money laundering, they catch somebody in a money room, easy three points.
Uh, like, I, Ruby, I understand the, the administrative concerns. Um, I, I took that into account.
I, I get where they're coming from, but I also get where they're coming from. So I don't know. It, it doesn't seem that bad.
Guys, you should be able to, you guys should be able to continue to administer yourself and have the cops that are on patrol right now achieve this goal, uh, one hundred percent.
Okay, but I don't see training a cadet as administrative.
Cops are being a little bit more one here about it.
Academy, which we need to do either next weekend or the weekend after, as administrative. It, it's gonna take a bunch of people off duty to train cadets.
Adopted Glorian yesterday, though.
We have to grow the PD. There's, there's no other way to curb crime in our. Uh, we have to grow the PD. There's, there's no other way to curb crime in our city unless we grow the PD and we train people.
Okay, uh, are you? I would really like to give like bonuses to people who do that shit. I know that I've heard, I've heard from, because my wife and I interviewed a bunch of cops, uh, you know, as part of like the audit and stuff. Um, and I routinely, I suggested that like FTOs get like a bonus as incentive for, you know, training, blah, blah, blah.
I put forward a request for FTO bonuses months ago.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're all on the same page, but I, I, I heard, I, I heard from several cops. They're like, you know, that it doesn't really, doesn't really change anything for them.
Well, if they, if they knew their pay was getting docked, I guarantee you they would say that differently now.
Okay, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm for handing out bonuses. Uh, so long as the time is logged and everything is above board and we can prove that they were, you know, FTOing or running academy for a certain amount of time, then I would 100% be behind, uh, financial, uh, what's it called? Payment for them.
Okay, can I just say one more thing about the, uh, the quota point system?
Yeah.
Uh, obviously you can do whatever you want, uh, but we have calls in which there are hostages. Those will always be a priority for the PD and, uh, that's just the way our SOPs go. If there's a hostage involved, we're going to that call, probably a lot of units. So I don't know if that's set up as is, but that would be a good, uh, middle round for PD to have.
Somebody, if they catch somebody in that hostage situation, this criminal possession of a firearm, four points, dude. Whole
Uh, robbery also.
Freaking.
Well, I, look, we're not talking about every crime right now. These, these are the things I'm personally interested in seeing you guys solve. Okay, or try to solve.
Understood.
Uh, yeah, I went ahead and added kidnapping for one quota point, okay?
So have you, have you seen, do you have access currently to our, uh, sit, you know, our incidents and reports?
Not yet. I, uh, we need to get that set up.
So the quota point is coming from, I suppose the easiest way you could say is blindness?
Uh, no, I mean, I talk to cops all the time.
You're but
And I talked, I talked to a lot of people on the street too, I'm the mayor.
Report writing too. People slacking on reports.
Yes.
He's been conducting a
They struggle catching people. They, okay, well, it's time for them to get good.
They're this entire like last week. So this is all like, but you have the recent data.
Right, but you haven't had access to see how much work we currently do, correct?
Uh, nope.
They have the audit reports, right?
Uh, I don't think the audit focused on those.
So I, I have a question.
Yeah, what's up?
So how, how is a, uh, like how is a point determined? I might have missed this coming in from 78's goal. But how's a point determined and, and who is a point awarded to a person? Whoever, whoever starts the report or?
To the LSPD.
Okay, okay, good.
Uh, and they're awarded by incident. So, you know, if someone is doing a sanitation robbery and they have a, an illegal gun, uh, you would award the highest point for that incident, which would be sanitation robbery, which is five points. Okay, simple.
And you only need 50 a week?
Uh, 55. Now I added a couple of charges or whatever at your guys' request.
What, what is the base? You get, do you get one?
Uh, e, 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 each sort of thing I'm interested in seeing, uh, pursued right now by the LSPD is worth a different amount of points.
But does it, does the lowest that you can get is one?
Uh, lowest you can get is 0.1 for a traffic citation.
Oh, oh shit, okay.
Yeah, so, so this coming week, we won't be bothered with any kind of traffic. We'll just be going for the higher points.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, 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 yes. Yes. Uh, any other questions on this?
Wait, so.
I, I just wanna clarify, is this to curb you yourself, mayor, from getting traffic citations?
No.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Wait, can I just ask? You were given one earlier this week, right?
Yeah, it was, uh, negligent driving.
Did our pay get raised before or after Bones gave you that ticket?
Uh, your pay got lowered after I got that ticket.
Okay.
Huh.
Why?
I was just asking.
Are you just asking?
I was just curious. I'm a curious guy, you know?
Well, it's, it's a very specific thing to be curious about.
Also.
Kind of a pointed question, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's like you're implying something about me.
What am I implying?
I don't know, that I might be corrupt?
Did I even hinted that?
A little bit, yeah.
Asking you a question is hinting at corruption?
Uh, asking me a question about retaliating against you guys for issuing me a traffic citation is hinting that I am corrupt, yes.
I was just asking for, you know, facts in order
Michael's been on an NA schedule, so he's probably a lot
Well, I mean, that's a very specific fact to be concerned about. That, that's all. I mean, there's a lot of other facts concerning the amount of power that I was just given by the federal government. Uh, didn't ask about those.
I would only be interested in the ones that deal with the PD, which we've been going pretty in detail today, I would say.
Okay, well, I mean, file that away in your, your dossier about impeaching Max the mayor and wipe your ass with it, because I haven't seen shit yet from you guys.
Okay, well, we don't need to go get ugly.
It's crazy. You seem to have an issue with the fact we're trying to work with you despite the fact we disagree with you sometimes.
Yeah, that's fair. Uh, and, and let's be entirely clear. The only people I need to work with in this room on this stuff is Ruby and Barrett. Uh, you guys are hearing this as a courtesy. This power is the mayor's and it will remain the mayor's. And nothing you guys say to me will ever make me want to change my mind unless I am genuinely interested in hearing your input. This is to the council. Um, but yeah. Woo, I, I, I'm gonna write up a, a full dossier on the, uh, the quota system. Should be easy to achieve. Uh, we can talk more about, uh, bonuses for training, which I would very much like to see. And I think that would solve a lot of the, uh, the monetary complaints. And also it would incentivize training people, which is good, because I know that FTOs receive a lot of burnout, because it's a very, a very, um, what's the word? Uh, draining, mentally draining job to kind of do, I couldn't do it. First of all, let's just be clear about that. Um, having to teach someone from the bottom up again and again and again, saying the same things over and over and over to different people. Oh, God, um, would love to see a bounty for that that you guys can collect on.
For FTO sessions?
Just training in general, like academies, FTOs, all, all that shit. Yeah, um, and I, I will send, I will send, uh, uh, it to, uh, Ruby and Barrett, the, uh, the full breakdown, the quota system. And, uh, you know, if, if you guys have any good questions or concerns moving forward, like this isn't something that has to be amended at council. So if, if you guys come to me with like a good point, uh, that you would like to see adjusted in a certain way, then I'm more than willing to talk about it and make a change on the fly to it.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Um, and you guys are welcome to say for the rest of the meeting if you guys want. Of course.
Yeah, we'd love to.
Hmm.
Uh, so I think that, I think we've worked through all of our guests today. Um, so now we can start presenting stuff that we have prepared for council. Does, uh, Niko, do you have anything to present by chance?
No, but I did see the turbo theft, which I brought up previously, like several weeks ago. Is that? Cause I got told that we weren't gonna get a new charge on that. Has that changed?
So, uh, it's been brought to my attention, uh, that this is like an epidemic.
It is.
Uh, so I do apologize if we, uh, didn't hear you when you brought it up the last time. Uh, I decided that it's probably time for something like this, because it's directly impacting the ability for people at Mosley's to do their job. When they're getting held up and forced to, uh, essentially extract, extract people's car parts that aren't theirs and then, you know, hand them over at gunpoint, so on and so forth. It's happened to cops, it's happened to people. Um, I talked, uh, yesterday with Cornwood, because he has a lot of experience at, uh, at Mosley's and, and also I bought a turbo recently, so I kind of have like a, a vague feel for how much, uh, this stuff is going for on the street. Uh, and I decided that the best way to do this, um, is to specifically limit it to aftermarket vehicular parts, uh, i.e. you know, stuff that you would be modifying your car with, i.e. the stuff that these criminals are targeting. Um, and I, I believe Cornwood said that the, the transmission, uh, like the aftermarket transmissions are 10,000, right?
Yeah, the automatic I know is at least 10K unless it's gone up, Cornwood. I don't know if you can speak to that.
So aftermarket typically runs the same cost as, uh, as, as wholesale, because you can just get those anytime anyway. Uh, now I heard from one person that the cost has gone down. So I gotta go check on that, but, uh,
It, it's gonna become, it goes down, because we typically wanna keep the fines larger than like a license cost or like, uh, or, you know, just straight up buying it, right? To, to incentivize buying it as opposed to stealing it, right?
Right, and actual return.
Um, and I wrote very briefly here, because I, I, I was so tired that I, I couldn't, uh, aptly and legally write a good little penal code blurb about this. I said, including turbos, transmissions and other sort of aftermarket parts, uh, you know, to cover it, that, anyone who's worked on a car has seen that there's definitely, uh, there are other ways to modify and improve cars that, uh, that Mosley's just hasn't stocked for yet. So this would kind of future-proof any other, um, forms of, uh, larceny of an aftermarket vehicular part. Boom, bop, boom. Uh, but yeah, I didn't mean to hijack your turn.
No, 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 no. Sorry. I, I genuinely did not mean to infer that. I was just curious, because it has been happening a lot to cops. Uh, it has been happening a lot to a lot of people. I just didn't know, uh, I am curious about, well, I guess it doesn't really matter, right? Because if someone steals a car, they just get joyriding, but
I- important note, um, uh, this would be for each part that they were in possession of. So you could charge them multiple times with this, because the things are so expensive.
So any turbo and any, uh, transmission?
Yeah.
Unless, is there other stuff that people buy aftermarket, Cornwood?
Right now, it's just those two things, I'm pretty sure.
Brought this up.
Uh,
Yeah, but I believe there, there's a lot of space in there, so maybe, maybe it'll get some more. But right now it's two.
I, I'm in favor of this. I've been in favor of this.
Uh, I had a, I had a just name suggestion, if you're open to it. Uh, if you change the last two words, uh, you can make it larceny of aftermarket motor enhancement, stands for lame, because it's lame that people are doing this shit.
Oh, that's good.
There you go. That's what I had.
Are we still, uh, a no-go on serializing those aftermarket parts?
Uh, I, I just don't know how we would go about, oh, Michael, what were you gonna say?
Hmm, I was gonna say that's like not really an us thing.
Okay, true.
I don't personally think we should, because if you start serializing, it's not, it's
Where do you stop?
Yeah, where do you stop? It might become too easy to track down and, and do shit.
Every single fucking thing of worth, then everyone will just be clamoring to get their fucking state ID stamped on it.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Okay, I think we serialize weapons and I think that's probably the only thing we need to serialize. Unless something that comes up that needs it, I think we just leave it at that for now. Okay, what's up, Cornwood?
Uh, I mean, I was just gonna say, it, it, when it comes to investigating this shit, not having those serialized makes it damn near impossible.
Yeah, how do you prove that they were stolen?
If it's not, if it's not identifiable.
I do, I do think Judge Crane is, is, you know, he's 100% right about where, when do you stop? But at the same time, for this particular case, it's, uh, we've had so many civilians having this shit happen to them and it just feels bad.
Okay, let me ask.
You gotta, gotta, gotta catch them in the act, do some proactive
This, this is not, it's not really something we can handle either way. We don't manufacture the parts, so.
Okay.
Let me ask, just, just if it comes on the table, are you talking about serializing just with a random serial or are you talking about with people's state ID when they buy it?
The purchase of it, the person who buys it, has their state ID on it?
So somebody buys something, they would be in charge of having to register that somewhere.
And maybe like a registration or something.
Yeah, but who, who's in charge of that registration?
I mean, that, that gives the mechanics at Mosley's some, yeah.
I guess they'd have to write it down somewhere. They wouldn't have access.
Okay, why, why does the mechanics mix this official though? Why can't a mechanic not just go in there and, and just add another name or remove it completely?
Hmm.
Hmm.
I mean,
There is no, there, there would be no official system to warrant that this is the correct way. It's just somebody making a note somewhere that would, in that case, be the official. Like I, I, again, I'm not trying to shut it down. I'm just asking these questions, because there is no
No, that is a good
Clear-cut way.
I mean, it would have to be somebody who is, you know, approved through a, you know, particular means in order to actually, hey, this person deserves this job because they're trustworthy. I mean, it's like, you know, we have the PD, right? I, I don't think that's, that should be the PD's job. I think we should give more jobs to more people in Los Santos. But that's, I mean, that's above my pay grade. That's just my opinion, you know?
Yeah, but the only way I can see this officially working would be that somebody buys a turbo, they get the serial, they go to PD, PD adds it to their MDT. That's the only way I can see that anything like that would even work.
Yeah, but then how do they prove that they paid for it and didn't just
Steal it.
Steal it and have it registered, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of loopholes and like, again, I'm not against it. It's just if you wanna go that route, you have to patch every single loophole.
So, so what about this? We, we have somebody, I mean, we talked to the manufacturer. We said, hey, can y'all put a serial number on this thing? A randomized serial number. And then whenever somebody buys that turbo, they get like a receipt of sale, right? So they got their paper receipt and then it is on the owners, the onus is on them at that point, to keep that receipt somewhere safe that ain't gonna get lost. And then if, if it does get lost, you go report it to the police and you say, hey, this is my, this is my shit. This is the serial number. I bought this.
I mean, a receipt system would be kind of nice for stuff like that.
What do y'all think about that?
I guess, yeah.
I don't know. I think it's opening Pandora's box. I think, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's above my pay grade. I was just, I was just throwing this shit.
I think for now, we'll leave it at a vehicle or not a vehicle, like it is right now. If it becomes a major issue, I'm sure the federal government would, will step in.
Hmm.
Uh, so I mean, while we're talking about it, uh, everyone in favor of introducing this as a, uh, penal charge?
Yeah.
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 Uh, Alan, what do you think? Since you're the, the arbiter.
I don't think it's necessary, but I'm nay, I guess.
Okay, um, disagree. Uh, any other nays? Okay, uh, super majority. Good, 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 good. Uh, I will write up a penal blurb and you can adjust it how you wish.
Do you want me to write the name down or are you happy with what you got?
Yeah, you can write the, you, you can write the name down.
Yeah, I'll write it at the bottom in case you want it. There you go. Hmm.
Uh, uh, Malton's not here, Cantor, you have anything you wanna present?
Uh, I wasn't able to work on my presentation, because I just haven't been around much, but I did have something, um, uh, uh, an idea for a charge, uh, that I haven't really plotted out time for. And I'll be honest, I'm just not the professional on that, so I'll defer to y'all. Um, this was a suggestion from one of my doctors, um, that there be essentially a charge for, um, committing violent acts on government property. So it wouldn't supersede the violent acts. It would just be an extra charge for having done it on government property. So we're running into an issue where the clowns especially are just going around fucking beating each other up and stabbing people in the hospital and other people are getting, uh, hurt for it and it's causing significant issues. Um, so that, that, that's the pitch essentially, kind of like a, an extra charge for having it be there. Not too big of a thing. It's not like medical terrorism, it's not like medical discredibility or something. Just, uh, you know, uh, don't fuck around here or you'll get punished a bit more.
Something to get into to stop, yeah.
Yes.
It is true, because like
PD grounds and stuff like
They were running through the emergency room and in the halls with wrenches out, attacking cops, trying to break out another one of the clowns that was in custody the other night.
Hmm.
And it's been happening quite often.
Yeah, doesn't need to be some giant thing, um, where it's like, you know, days and days in prison, just, uh, you know, like, uh, the, the pitch was essentially just discourage it as kind of like a middle ground there. I could go either way on it, but I figured I'd pitch it to see how y'all feel about it. I think it's, it's better than going as hard as some of the charges we've had in the past for committing violent acts, uh, in the hospital. Um, it's a lighter thing that I think people could actually push if we just did something like this, uh, is, is my fault on it.
So patients are actually being injured while the clowns are clowning around?
Uh, I don't think patients yet. Um, doctors, yes, already. Uh, that one obviously could apply to like, you know.
Oh, is it, is it an ego act sort of cover that if they're injuring doctors?
If they're going after doctors, yes. The, the issue is, um, recently, uh, clowns have been choosing choosing the hospital for everything. They are attacking each other in and outside of the hospital uh all the time and causing significant issues for for just everyone.
Yeah, a lot of the people that are hurt um are kind of collateral damage, so I don't know if that could actually be pushed.
I know, it's it's kind of like they're not, no one's being targeted um other than more clowns. They're just bringing it all to the hospital and fucking with uh everyone else who's there.
Is this part of the clown games? Just out of curiosity, do you know?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's just them being them.
Just being them being them and choosing the hospital because hey, if I get fucked up, I'm in the best place for it. Sounds like it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, uh you know, if like I said, uh this was not my additional idea. If y'all are aren't a fan of it, that's okay, but uh I do think it's a better middle ground. Uh it's a dissuasion from people fucking around at the hospital without fucking their lives over completely if they feel like they have to.
Sorry, so I want to double check. You're suggesting like a charge, not like diet terrorism or whatever or medical discontinuity, but something that just is like if you're committing violence on hospital grounds repeatedly or?
The idea was government grounds, so uh any government property um just to dissuade that kind of behavior uh on specifically government um government property.
Do we have nothing like that as is?
No.
Uh there's like felony trespassing, but there's not.
But they're not trespassing if they're like outside of MRPD or in the hospital, you know, unless they're trespassed.
They're still on government property committing a violent act.
Property, yeah.
Can anyone hear me?
I don't think.
We can hear you now.
I don't think that addressing everything with a law fixes it. I think there are.
Uh I for this particular crime, these things are so expensive and in demand that I think uh the co- the cost of operation for someone to have a gun uh and go to Mosley's and get away with this crime or just a knife even, they don't even need a gun to make a mechanic try to pull this shit out. Um yeah, I I think you could charge them with uh what like fucking aggravated robbery or some shit? What what would what would the most applicable charge be right now?
Are you still talking about the turbo? We moved on to another topic if you weren't. I don't know if you can hear us either, probably.
So no, 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 I was I was writing.
Oh, no, no, no.
You're you're okay, yeah.
Cantor was talk Cantor was talking about like aggravated violence on government property.
Yeah, essentially another charge for if they commit violent acts uh on government grounds, so like around MRPD and at the hospital. Doesn't need to be something that throws them away for days or something, just an extra dissuasion.
Just ego act them, right?
So I was saying, but.
That was the issue is that they're not targeting anyone. Um they just are fucking around too much type thing. It's not, it's not really the ego act.
They're choosing to take their little clown fuck around games at the hospital.
City hall if they do fuck shit here or trying to like uh tag you here, another modifier. So it just uh dissuades them from coming here to like hurt you or anything.
If not another charge, I mean, could end up trespassing them all, I guess.
Uh trying. In the past, when we had people fuck around too much, uh but we don't want to ban people who need access to the hospital from getting it, right? We had forced somebody.
We won't trespass and it'd be very uh less less decision, less choice.
Yeah, yeah, we had forced uh people to um essentially not be at the hospital unless they had a real medical need to be there and to not interact with doctors, right? Otherwise.
Yeah.
Creamy remember, I'm thinking of like Jaco Ramona right now. Um I don't see why something like that couldn't be the case. Or like right there, trespass unless they need actual medical care.
Yeah.
I mean, we do that. Um I just don't want to make it the business of unnecessarily trespassing um people who aren't causing issues for us, right? Like um like as as doctors directly. Um when they're more causing issues to the general public who are trying to come get help. Um like, you know, we we'd end up having a giant fucking trespass list that can never really be enforced because we can't do anything about it. We have to wait for the cops to come and oftentimes the cops don't come and even if they you know, do by that time, they would have already left. Like it doesn't uh the issue isn't that we don't want them there. We just don't want them attacking people, which is why the charge. Also, people like to uh retaliate against trespass uh and attack our doctors, so.
That sounds like ego act a hundred percent.
Sounds like.
That one would, but you know, uh discouraging the violent acts in the first place is ideal.
I I see what you're saying. I do sympathize because I certainly do not like having to wait for individuals to hit the certain amount of incidents so I could be, Max and I could stop getting fucking harassed uh under ego act, so I I do sympathize.
Yeah, and I'm like I said, I'm I'm not looking for it to be something as big as ego act. Very much just an extra dissuasion, probably, you know, smaller or something around like a.
I'm just not sure when it comes to the clowns, how an how an additional charge would actually deter them.
They're an example. Uh they're not.
Okay, they're not the only ones.
It's pretty common that people uh just do not give a fuck uh and will do a bunch of dumb shit at the hospital.
Well, I mean, Chatterbox is on his fucking trying to beat his old overdraft record arc right now, so um you know, adding more fines for that would just, he just says it wouldn't discourage him. It would do the opposite. It would encourage him.
One person, yes. Um but for the wide majority of people, there really is no respect there at all. Uh we've had people kidnapped from inside of the hospital and uh and and fucking shot up, stabbed constantly in the hospital and just.
Can we get metal detectors at the hospital?
Uh I I don't know if I want to go that far even, to be honest. Uh uh people can have whatever the fuck as long as they don't use it, which again, why just I think the charge is more enough. Okay. Okay, we seem a little unsure on that one, so we can uh we can leave it. It's all good.
If you want to talk about it more like in detail, Cantor, I'd be happy. So there's something like more concrete written down. We could see if uh there's something.
Yeah, I don't know shit about it so far, and so if you want to, if you want to click on that with me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Uh I forgot, I have two very brief things. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Uh we're having an issue. Now, again, this is very niche. Uh we're having an issue with people coming into PD specifically to harass dispatch and uh the receptionists and they're throwing hundreds and hundreds of pieces of paper on the ground and littering at a uh egregious rate. Uh is it even feasible to get some kind of felony littering charge that is above the base?
Charge them a hundred times littering.
Is that?
Hell, yeah. Can we get a point for that, man?
Um, no.
Littering, littering is not an excuse to throw as much shit as possible at once because you only get charged once. If you're throwing fifteen items out of your truck, you're gonna hit fifteen times.
Oh, oh, okay, understood. That is uh perfect.
There you go.
Oh, sorry. And the second thing, uh Siobhan, I don't know if you've been approached by McNulty about this. One of our officers, sergeant actually, uh was is very committed to keeping Cypress Flats free of drugs. He is from Ireland and uh he was hoping that uh Cypress Flats and that you you're aware of what I'm referring to.
Yeah, I do know. I do know. Yep, yep, yep.
I don't know if you'll be able to speak a little bit more eloquently than I have. He just shot me a email really quickly. I don't know if you want to. I I'd probably defer to you to.
Oh, yeah, he shared his dream of Little Ireland with me. All right, he he's gonna wear green when he patrols down there. Um that that that's about it. That's all I got.
Yeah, he wants to rename Cypress Flats Little Ireland, basically, was his request.
Where's Cypress Flats?
Not like a an official like renaming, just just referring to it as such as a neighborhood, I believe. I think that's what I told him. That like he wouldn't be able to actually, you know.
Yeah, we're not renaming shit. What the?
Yeah, rename things.
All right, that's all I needed because if I said if that's the answer, I'm gone. I would drop it immediately, so. That's all I got.
Uh, okay, so Cantor, do you have anything else you want to present?
Uh just the one right now. I'm still working on the scheduling idea. I still I feel still kind of mixed a bit, but I'll see if I can land the place that would be useful for us. Um so I've just been working with a few extra people. Hopefully I'll have that soon.
I'm super happy to sit down with you on that, by the way.
Yeah, when we talk about your idea, we can talk more about it. That'd be amazing.
Who's next?
Uh I don't have anything. I was out sick last week, so I'm I'm still catching up on things.
I'm sorry to hear you're sick.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thinking about, I only have the TMNT Act.
Oh, yeah.
The TMNT Act.
You guys went over everything last time, correct?
Uh we we tabled a couple of things, I think, right?
Yeah, we actually tabled stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Which one?
Uh, which one?
They're all not approved and not removed, so I'm assuming you guys what they were.
Uh the DNA on file, we ended up amending the constitution uh but not uh for the ability to request removal upon ending of employment with the PD as long as you're like in good standing when you leave. Uh but we did not add any additional government employees.
No, that's fine. That was like the entire.
I remember that was, that was the main thing for that, exactly. Uh.
Murphy's Law.
Murphy's Law, yeah, and then um the death penalty one uh still tabled because Cantor and I didn't have a chance to work out like doctor specifics and trying to just.
I'll be around a lot more, so we'll get that done. I promise.
Sounds good.
All right, if anything was, everything was talked about, then I guess the TMNT Act uh is basically to prevent people from going to the sewers because they are causing damages to utility, basically. It can.
Is this stemming from the town hall? Is this stemming from that town hall?
That one?
Which one?
Remember when the explosions, uh the one that uh you, me and uh Siobhan uh did?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, so it's one of them. Uh the amount of people putting stills down there, they can't seem to figure out how to do their own fucking job, probably. That shit keeps exploding. At some point, it's gonna cause cause damages. So and they shouldn't be in the sewers in the first place. Unless they have a valid reason. That is kind of TLDR.
Yeah, what would constitute a valid reason to be down there?
Utility workers?
Yeah, utility, job, work related.
Okay.
Are the uh how much is a fine for this?
Well, so the thing is, uh we don't have a specific, so we, Siobhan and I talked about.
Wouldn't it just be felony trespassing?
It does sign here, the penalties for.
Would would you be able to do that, though?
I mean, who who owns the sewer infrastructure? It's the government, right? So it's felony trespassing.
Okay.
Damn. Are you guys are you guys gonna put together an elite sewer unit?
I've been down there. It's rough.
Oh, no, not in this.
I've been trying to do that for weeks.
Fucking rough down there.
Yeah, I don't know if you want, I don't know if you want PD or anyone to like go specific in the sewers, but just having a reason like.
Catching them come out.
Catch them going in and out.
Ooh, yeah, you just sit above a manhole, man. There's one, there's one, uh I saw, I saw a bunch of these motherfuckers crawl out of the one across from Roy Lowenstein like cockroaches.
The one right in the way.
Yeah, right across.
Yeah, there's.
You do like, you do in your backyard with gophers, you sit above the hole and you smoke them out and chop their heads off with a shovel.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, it'd be great. Except you probably legally should not chop their heads off with a shovel.
It's probably not. It'd flood more often, honestly.
I think that at first people were scared that this wasn't legal in the first place, uh but when they realized that that wasn't the case, they become very lazy. They just leave. Uh they they opened the fucking potholes. People could fall down. Uh all all types of shit. They shouldn't be going down there in the first place.
Oh, yeah, they don't even try to hide the shit. It's crazy. It's also horrifically unsafe down there. I did some testing on things uh early on. Uh and there it's radioactive down there uh and could cause extreme significant health uh issues if they're not wearing appropriate clothing, which I fucking doubt most civilians are.
Nope, they stopped trying.
Yeah, we actually will not let any PD person down.
I was happy to see Bjorn using a space here. I don't like to see Bjorn.
Some wild shit on that's unsafe to be wearing.
That flesh eating bacteria.
Slowly kill them, even if they feel fine at first. Hey, they might even start to feel a bit better, but it will slowly wear away at their insides and cause one of the worst.
They did get the iron feet. Don't care.
Uh yeah, making it illegal is a good idea.
Well, I guess we don't.
I hate that they do it in plain clothes.
We felony trespassing, I guess that's.
Yes.
I hate that everybody does it in plain clothes, actually.
We encourage the cops to do that. I like it.
I don't know, Crane, could you add? So right now it says includes power plants? Is that still the case? Like, are people not allowed near the power plants?
I guess it's still. Government land, isn't it? So.
I do not think we should be running around you know, public utilities and shit, right?
It's not a job.
Would you add the sewer system to it?
The cops on it?
Common civilian going down there to grind moonshine.
And then some other judge can figure it out.
Sounds good.
That's delegation, baby.
Man, it also allows for things to come to me naturally instead of me just waving the wand.
Um in that case, I will close this one.
Great night, Mo.
Thank you. I think that's the only thing I have.
Uh let's see here. Uh did Alan say if he had anything?
Uh I got two things.
Go.
Uh first, uh I am uh just, you know, uh concerned about uh some things I've been seeing uh related to uh well, what I have affectionately uh coined as a uh a debt uh reservoir. Uh there are certain uh criminal elements and or independent operators uh who seek to sort of live outside of society's constraint. Uh and I've noticed that behavior is cropping up again, so uh if uh people are going to flaunt uh the government by uh being in debt permanently and never caring about getting out of debt, well, then maybe we'll figure out a way for them to get out of debt.
I was actually going.
So I'm going to uh, I'm gonna look into that. We're gonna see about maybe making some changes to how that all works.
Yeah, when we were just talking about the clowns, actively going into monumental debt uh should have repercussions.
Absolutely, it should.
Well, the government will uh will be fetching their fair coin, so we'll see how that goes. Uh the other one is uh I think pretty much some of us have already discussed, Equitas.
Uh how how do you want us to approach that situation as a PD? Cause.
Uh it's not at that level yet. We're, I'm just, I'm giving the council fair notice that I recognize there's an issue there and the DOJ is looking into solutions with the government. Uh but in terms of, you know, the future, that 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 takes time.
You guys won't, you guys won't have to change how you operate all.
Not at all.
Set them in prison and then they're, you know, if they're in debt, then.
We will be there for longer. Yeah, we will see how it's gonna, how it's gonna work out. Okay, but it is something that we recognize is an issue and it is being uh looked at.
All right.
Uh my second one, which uh I think most people. Uh, my second one, which, uh, I think most people have already discussed with me somewhat, uh, is the expungement amendment. Uh, I recognize that, uh, initially our scheme was to, uh, proffer the expungement arrangement, uh, but it was contingent upon, uh, a high monetary sacrifice because there was no, uh, you know, there wa, there was no time, time limit. Uh, you could just, you could just come in, murdered eight cops the day before, slapped down a huge amount of money and you're, you know, you're, you're clean. Uh, and I recognize who that targets, but I think that we should probably also target the other side of the equation, the other outliers, right? Uh, for people who truly did mess up, uh, and are looking for a second chance and not only are looking for a second chance, but have demonstrated, uh, for a long period of time that they are living that second chance, whether or not we offer them the deal or not. Uh, and that, you know, point to me is somewhere around thirty days. Uh, so if someone were to be crime free, then I, I could very much understand that, that, you know, this is that person who truly tried to turn their life around. They're not just gonna, you know, well, gosh, what, what random scenario could I come up with? They're just not gonna pay five hundred thousand dollars to run for mayor, you know? Uh, these are people that truly, you know, made a change.
Look at Mr. Shira, right? Who we just heard from today.
Sure, yeah. Uh, and that Greg idiot, whatever, fucking Greg, yeah.
Sober now.
Yeah. Uh, so either way, uh, basically the parameters I came up with are pretty simple. I put them in there. If you guys have ideas on tweaking anything, I, I just threw this together in like two minutes talking to Shavon the other day. So the idea was, if you've been clean greater than thirty days, uh, the lower rate, uh, on your first time is fifty instead of five hundred, hundred, and you know, hundred and fifty third time. Uh, and this lower rate can only be used every thirty days. So if you get an expungement and you fuck it up and you wanna just like get clean again, uh, it's not the thirty days again. It's, it's a longer time period.
We think about, uh, forty thousand for the first time.
Uh, are you trying to save ten K that you're gonna pay for Timo?
Uh, no.
I'm not. I like, I like, I like fifty K.
Fifty is.
I think fifty makes sense. They're all nice, even though there's all that.
Uh, okay. We tried.
Yeah, we've come down, what, the first time it was five hundred, we've took it down to a hundred, and now we're down to fifty. I think that's more than.
And then, hey, you know, if someone does want an expungement and can't be fucked and put in the time for something like running for mayor, they can pay fuck tons of money still, easy.
Uh, okay, yeah, I, I have no objections to the what you have written. Uh, in fact, I think it's really great.
Yeah, I think it covers everything. I think, uh, I think we got a decent system going.
Cool. Amendment passes.
Oh, yeah.
Nice. Um, ba, 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 uh, Mike, you already presented yourself. Ed, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Actually, I do have. So, we, I did have another thing. That is still work in progress, so don't mind it. It is the turf act. If you guys have any ideas or anything for it, feel free to add, talk, voice your opinion. Right now it's rough, so don't even, basically, it is to prevent people from bunkering down wherever the fuck they want and then telling people to fuck off and saying like, if you go on my turf, I will kill you.
Oh, that's.
That is.
Or like when I got robbed, just walking to the clothing store.
Yeah, I think, uh, it was initially started when, um, Shavon was doing this scavenger hunt, uh, and people were being threatened that they would be murdered if they went on a Chumash Pier.
What?
Well, we know, we know it's called a murder pier, but it's still kind of, you know.
Yeah, but by a gang that said, this is our territory and you can't go on there or we will kill you.
Usually they wait till you get on the pier, then they murder you.
Okay, when I put the signs up, by the way, alright, they weren't there, so I, I didn't realize that that was gonna be a problem. I wasn't trying to, yeah.
But they, they shouldn't be doing it either way, so that's not on you to, to worry about that, honestly.
So, but there are exceptions. So why are there exceptions?
Well, because Vagos always had, always had to have the same turf. GSF has always had the same turf. Wallace has always.
We should take it back. We should go and clean it all up. If you wanna go clean it up, I'm all for it, but.
I could see there being a difference with things like, you know, the, the Ballas and the Vagos and stuff. They've always had like, um, you know, their own little residential block. I think that that is a tiny bit different to have your own little space to, you know, uh, this whole fucking pier is ours, you can't touch it.
I, I feel like if you go to the Vagos area, you will always see people in yellow. If you go to the Ballas area, you will see people in purple, and if you go to GSF, you will see people in green.
We might be able to come up with a distinction that's a little bit more subtle than these gangs can get away with it. Um, something about state property versus, you know.
I was gonna say the pier, right? Estate property, so that would still just be, it's open to the public, it would still be trespassing.
Yeah, true.
See, what if, uh, what if we use all the tax money we got so far in the state account to, uh, on behalf of the state make straw purchases, like the council buys up like all the available real estate? And then we create, uh, like a state-run property market where we choose who we sell to. So, and we can make interest.
Yeah, we can make a profit, basically.
What about after we're out of office?
Oh, well, I mean, hmm.
Dividends at that point, or?
I don't know. I ain't got that far yet.
Again, it's a work in progress, so nothing is final, nothing is really in, in writing, so just kinda chew on it. If you have any input, just add it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, cuz I, I don't wanna just do a blanket thing. I don't wanna say like, hey, you can, you can choose this as your turf. It is.
Oh, yeah, they'll fucking.
It is like, it is just to prevent people from choosing a turf and then telling people that I will murder you if you come here.
Yeah, like, holding down, uh, yeah, that's one thing, but like literally not letting people use something that is public, uh, yeah. Uh, I don't know. Uh, yeah, I'll have to read it and think about.
They can buy the turf, but they cannot threaten.
Yeah, so if, if you're specifically, you know, stating they, they can hold down the turf, they can do all that, the issue was just threatening that the say it's against. We don't really need exemptions, because like, sure, fuck it, the Ballas and the Vagos can do their thing, but like, they still shouldn't be threatening to murder people, ideally if they just like go down the wrong street or something.
Yeah, I don't know. And that's why it's a work in progress, so just, if you have anything, just add it.
Yeah, I'll cook on it more.
Yeah.
Uh, cool. Uh, the, the, the chief of staff, Shavon Thurber, do you have anything you wanna present?
Uh, yeah, okay, so this was actually born of a conversation with Judge Engel post, uh, the Bingo Dan case, uh, where she discussed that there could have been some possible hmm, issues with my standing of the, my ground against the Dan's. Uh, they were literally trying to knock over the trailer with a monster truck. Anyway, um, duty retreat exception. I know we talked about, okay, yeah, I know you say that, alright, but she said that she was really on the fence and was likely to give me gun charges, but I didn't get, Angel?
About what?
Alright, 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 just hear me out, hear me out, alright? I think that there should be a duty retreat exception when an individual is in their own residential property with a reasonable fear for their life.
Agreed.
Well, what was the scenario that she said she would give you charges on?
Uh, specifically that scenario when I was inside the trailer and the Dan's were outside, that she did consider criminal use of a firearm.
And did she find you guilty?
No, cuz the testimony didn't go in that direction, but it was a possibility.
Right, but it sounds like, sounds like we're good.
Uh, we're not entirely good because, I mean, Dakota agrees and I agree with my wife that, um, if there are four psychopaths circling my house in monster trucks screaming that they're going to.
Yeah, but so did the judge.
Exception.
Uh. Wha, wha, was that like a line of questioning that was actually explored and like?
No, we never went down that line of questioning, so it wasn't explored, but she had looked at the reports and if the testimony did go down that line, then she thought it was likely. And then she said that she would like to see something changed on, in, in this article. Or stand your ground, because of how it's specifically written. So because a line of questioning didn't go down that path, no, that wasn't likely, but that doesn't mean that that's not gonna be in the case in the future. I was actually really lucky that Mickey did not ask me that many questions.
I don't know what duty to retreat means, but.
Pretty much she said like if they, if we had test, if I had done, if there had been testimony on that, then, uh, she would have, uh, said it was not stand your ground, right? But luckily I wasn't on trial, right? But like, that's, that can be a very real problem for anyone in the future.
Oh, retreat if he could, but only doing so if it's not dangerous.
Okay, uh.
I, I know we ran into issues with the Rod Long incident before outside local library vehicles, which is why this is not for vehicles and not like, you know, castle doctrine or defend all your property, right? It's just within your residential property.
So.
Why is it worded like that? I, I don't.
Did they enter your home that you opened fire on them, or? Okay, if they stepped foot on, into your home, then yes, you have every right to shoot them, yeah, cuz you have nowhere else to go.
Yeah, one, one way in, one way out.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. You are defending yourself.
And they were trying to, uh, turn it over with a monster truck, so I unlocked the door. It was a moment.
Okay, well, that's.
That's why.
Well, yeah, you.
What am I supposed to do? Just stay trapped inside while monster trucks hit my trailer?
No, yeah, no. Um, I think we're on the same page. I think it makes sense that you shot.
But if I opened the door and I'm going outside to shoot them, am I not the aggressor, Crane?
If they're trying to.
It all depends on what you articulate, uh, because the, the, this is why there's that famous saying, it's better to be judged by twelve than carried by six or whatever, right?
Hmm.
Because you have the ability to articulate your thought process. I mean, uh, the reason why stand your ground is typically amorphous like this, or not amorphous, but that's the wrong term. Uh, the reason it is not technically precise is because it is very hard to define reasonableness and imminent and those kinds of things, uh, described by language. It, it, it requires articulation of the nuance in each individual case, which is why, you know, we have judges to interpret that. I don't, I don't think that adding, uh, an exception changes anything in any of the scenarios that you brought up.
It sounds like they were about to run over your house.
Yeah.
Yeah, you staying in your home was gonna put your life in danger, yeah.
Yeah, no.
It all depends on the, on their, on, on their, on the articulation of what happened and how you describe it.
I called nine one one and cops sent shot for thirty minutes. It's the first thing I'm gonna say on that. Um, and I reached a point where I, I, I agonized until I pulled that gun out and did what I did because I have not seen.
You wouldn't get convicted.
Stand your ground once. So I was scared that I would go to prison.
How many, how many of those cases have there been?
Uh, I don't know. I've seen four of them.
Okay, I mean, I haven't, I haven't heard anything, so I'd assume they all were not stand your ground.
Apparently, which is why I agonize that, like, what if I just put my foot in the mouth, um, my mouth?
Yeah, but you can't, you can't. You can't, you can't watch eight people drive drunk and then go, oh, god, what, what happens if I, you know, get a false positive on the breathalyzer? It's like, no, like, you're, you know, you're gonna be fine. It, it, the pattern doesn't mean it's gonna happen again. It's only four, too. That's not even, that's not a good sample size. You can't draw rational conclusions.
See versus like ones that other people have told me, cuz I can't speak to the ones other people have told me. I've just.
Yeah, well, you know, you know, for me to judge, what's the rule? Never take third-party info.
Exactly, that's why I didn't state it.
Yeah.
Well, eyewitness testimony is famously unreliable.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think I'd rather see that play on court because I don't think there's ever a case where someone would not be able to defend themselves and be told, well, you should have retreated further into your home. That's the stupidest thing ever.
I was hiding in the bathtub.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I don't think it would ever make any sense.
This is just been a conversation about.
I think you're already protected by the thing you're asking for.
Yeah. Fine, that's fine.
I truly believe so. And, and, well, I'm telling you right now, that if, if, if there was a scenario exactly as you described it, and a lower judge were to find that to be not standing around, I'd probably overturn it, cuz I can't understand how it wouldn't be.
Alright, then, um, then I am, I am confident, if you're confident in that, and, uh, we don't need to present that one.
I think we're on the same page. I think Angel is just very precise and very technical. Uh, and she was probably going out of an abundance of caution and saying, I don't know what could have been said. If, if this, 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 and, 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 then maybe, uh, is still not, you know, it's not a yes.
Hey, um, I know, I mean, that makes sense to me. I'm just, you know, letter versus spear to the law, was concerned by, uh,
Yeah.
He said they'd overturn it with that scenario, um, I'm, I'm confident.
The only thing that I think that maybe needs to be, uh, explained, cuz I never noticed this before, the way I wrote it, uh, the examples I gave for steps you would need to take to remove yourself or both physical, and that wasn't intended, so maybe that's what's confusing people.
I would.
When I, when it says however a person is required to take reasonable steps, it should be, you know, anything that is a reasonable step, not a physical step, so, such as, uh, telling the person you are armed or walking away, right? To, so try to avoid the necessity of taking their life. You tell them their arms, so they, your arms, so they back off, right? You pull the gun out and brandish it, so they back off. Those are steps to avoid shooting. Uh, take reasonable steps. Okay, yeah, so we could edit that. I think that might make it more clear.
I would agree with that, then. I think that would alleviate a lot of the issues.
Alright, cool. Uh, I will amend that now and note it. If anyone is opposed, say now, please. Alright, I will go ahead and edit that now.
Anything else, uh, chief of staff?
Uh, are we gonna do the, um, shall, shall I wait on the instance one or no?
Yeah, that one's tabled for now.
Okay, table for now. Um, no, unless you wanna present the unauthorized business infractions.
Yep, that's the last thing that I would like to present, uh, in preparation for eventually having the federal government say, hey, all of those businesses you've approved are approved and they can start operating. Uh, in preparation for that, we are going to have a charge for operating an unlicensed business, um, and it is very expensive because the business license is fifty thousand, uh, I settled on seventy-five thousand as a fine for doing it to incentivize people actually seeking out and operating, uh, legally within Los Santos, uh, for the purpose of allowing the state to retrieve its sales tax. Um, it's in there under operating an unlicensed business. Any opposers? Question mark? I have questions, but I am initially not opposed. Questions. Does social media postings, i.e. the Yellow Pages, count? Um, if someone puts up, hey, come to, you know, whatever their business name is, is, uh, for this amenity, repair, food, whatever. And it's not a licensed business, sorry. Here's what I wrote for the penal blurb. Uh, I wrote henceforth is, is now, uh, illegal to claim to own or operate a business within Los Santos without an officially administered business license. This does not include the food stalls present in the senior Buns Mall. The appropriate permit for such will suffice. So, yeah, it would be illegal for people to say on Twitter that they own a business. Okay. Uh, Ruby?
Uh, is it any chance we could also include charities?
Like an unlicensed charity?
I'll, I'll explain. We, uh, we come across a lot of people that are doing charity work.
Yeah, no nonprofits.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's a hard no for me. No nonprofits ever.
How about unlicensed lotteries?
Uh, I like, I like. If people are dumb enough, if people are dumb enough to buy into it, then fuckin', hey. There's no contract, there's no nothing, you was buying a ticket. If you, hey, I'm, I wait for the day when somebody runs with all the money, cuz there's nothing protecting these people.
Understood. Right now we'll focus on, uh, businesses. Got it. Uh.
Oh, I forgot. I actually had something else.
Uh, yeah, so, but first, do we have any names for this, uh, business, uh, uh, unlicensed business charge?
No, I think it's fair.
Uh, I marked it as a misdemeanor because I don't think this should, uh, uh, I, I don't think it should disqualify people.
To make, yeah, their business legitimate.
Exactly.
But, uh.
How do we, uh?
Give them a grace period.
No, uh, my, my, my hesitation is how do we ensure that, uh, we don't run into like the lemonade stand problem?
What do you mean? What do you mean?
Hmm.
Meaning like, you know, when typically when you write laws like these, right? And it's just anyone running a business without a license, uh, that gives police grounds to, you know, bill someone running a lemonade stand seventy-five thousand dollars. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is do we want to like, how do we not allow that to happen?
Uh, we can, we can, uh, we can have it in the SOPs that they're warned one time before that they're issued this license.
Hmm, okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah, and then you, you mark the warning down there, uh, their profile or whatever.
Yeah, one more again.
The mechanics that kind of work, um, how do I even word it? Um, that, you know, I guess contractors, yeah, like, since they're still technically through Mosley's, but they're not advertising as their own entity, but they are conducting business not on Mosley's property. Would that still count or?
Do like Finley Milton on his like advertisements or whatever?
Yeah, well, I know there's tons of mechanics that just kind of go to different places.
Yeah, some are like outright businesses that are advertising and some of them are like, hey, if you need a repair, come to this place. Less informal, I guess.
But it sounds like they should just get a business license if they're doing all that.
Yeah, uh, it ultimately comes down to the, uh, the LSPD's ability to articulate that someone is attempting to operate an unlicensed business.
Got it.
Cool. Uh, any opposers? Question mark? Cool, um. Nice, very good.
The, uh, the turbo law was everyone yay, me nay, right?
Hmm, I, I believe so.
Stating, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, multi.
I wrote up some penal language in the, uh, operating an unlicensed business one. You can modify that in a better way, Alan, if you think it needs to be modified. Uh, I'm pretty sure that's it, lads. Pretty sure that's it.
Adoption policy.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
How are we adjusting that again?
Sure, I wanted to talk to everybody and brainstorm about it because there's currently a loophole in the adoption policy for like daisy chaining adoptions.
Oh, right, yeah.
Hmm.
What, what's the loophole? Yeah, what do you mean?
So, um, uh, an example, right? I could adopt Michael. Michael can adopt Etta. Etta can adopt Crane. Crane can adopt Alex. Alex can adopt Canter and so on and so forth. And now you've extended a weird, let's say they're all, however it's adopted, right? However it is, now you have this like weird, especially if it was siblings, right? Now you have this like weird sort of extended.
Yeah.
Yeah, let them be freaks, but they, how much would they would have paid by that point? That's, hey, fuck it. Don't we want that? We want that delusional shit.
Was the money generation, no?
We, we, we don't want that because the, part of the reason why I even conceived this to begin with is because uh, it, it, it encourages like a, another layer of hidden retaliation potentially between two parties that would otherwise be solved. Like, for example, police department arrests somebody like Billy Bob Joe, but he's got a secret fake relative that's gonna come and fucking slit that cop's throat, shit like that. Uh, it, it convolutes and, uh, what a muddy is conflicts like on the street too between people. So no, we don't, we don't want the, the daisy chaining.
You're saying like mass relation.
Right, so it's deterred, but.
Streets, got it.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I mean.
So, so what is the appro- uh, proposed change?
I don't know. I mean, I mean, also wouldn't a judge just deny you? Cause to, to, to make the daisy chain work, you'd have to claim that you were like the great grandson of so and so. And that person's you, is your same age or even younger than you potentially? Seems kinda dumb.
It does say, uh, the system does not recognize grandchildren or other assorted familial relations.
Grandchildren, right? But those like external ones rather than say sibling one.
Yeah, chain wouldn't work then, right?
I feel like the chain would still work with siblings.
Yeah, but siblings aren't adoption. Don't adopt your sister.
People do around here.
That's been approved?
I was under, I don't think they have, uh, under the new system, but in the past they sure as hell have. So I was under the understanding that, uh, the adoption policy applied to adopting any type of family member, cause people do that shit all the time.
It's written as adopter versus adoptee. Yeah.
Can't, can't be able to just buy each other matching bracelets or something?
That's what I'm fucking saying, but no, people care about it for some reason. And I think we should charge them for caring about it, but, uh, you know.
Uh, yeah, I don't know how to close this. We'll, we'll, we'll focus on it, uh, this week, babe.
Okay. Uh, also another thing somebody brought up to me, which is, um, just threw it into cancel documents, uh, for adoption policy amendment for a different one. Um, not sure everyone feels about this. Not entirely sure how I feel about this, but I said I would write this up and see what people's thoughts are.
Uh, I'm not for that.
All right, well then never mind. Just kidding.
What are, what are we, what?
Never mind, just kidding. Pretend you never saw this.
Uh, it's, it's fine. Don't worry about it.
I, I've now done as I promised I would do. That's it.
Sick. Um, I, the only thing I really had to present was the unlicensed business operation. So I believe we are concluded. Uh, everyone smile for the camera. This is our first televised, uh, council meeting, C-SPAN style. Uh, thank you, Ursula. Thank you, Ruby, for coming.
Thank you, Ursula.
Thank me with cash.
Also, uh, you should get with, uh, Maltin at some point. If you haven't, uh, to go over your board seat. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, congratulations again, by the way.
Thank you.
Uh, I think he's been trying to, trying to link up with you, uh, maybe you guys are different time zones or whatever, um. Oh, and, uh, just since we're being recorded for posterity, uh, the government should stay out of our business. Uh, and why can't the children smoke crack in the coal mines? Thank you.
That's what I'm fucking saying.
Yearning for the mines.
Uh, okay, good. Uh, good to see everyone. Thanks for coming.